So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you please take roll call?
Yes, council members, just a reminder that please state the city, township, or county and state in which you are participating in this meeting yet. And first off, Dave Abdallah?
Here, I'm in Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Zuhair Abdahak?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Moby Dune?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. Glad to be back home.
Bob Conston?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell is absent today. Ray Muscat?
Here, Wayne County, Dearborn Heights, Michigan.
And Tom Winsell?
Here, the great city of Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Amen.
Council Chair Pro Tem, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
At this particular time, I'd like to have Councilman Tom Winsell lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman. Please be seated. At this particular point, I'm gonna have agenda approval.
Council Pro Tem?
And was there Councilman Moe?
Winsell.
Oh, Councilman Tom Winsell, go ahead.
I'd like to approve the agenda for the electronically held meeting, February 23rd, 2021, with the exception of, I'd like to delete 9J.
9J.
We've had dozens of phone calls on this and text messages. It's something I think we should look in the future, real near future of having a study session or a town hall meeting or something on this.
Support.
All in favor?
Mister? Aye.
Any opposed?
Council Chair or Pro Tem?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilman Conston.
Our discussion prior to the meeting was that we were going to refer this to a study session. So if we take it off the agenda, we, you know, we can't do that.
Well, one of the options that we can do, Councils, maybe at the end of the meeting, one of the council members can make a motion to have a study, to have our council chair do a study session in regards to this. And I think-
I'll do that.
That should suffice, shouldn't it?
That's a good idea.
Okay, well-
Let me verify that with the Madam Clerk. Is that, is that correct, Madam Clerk? Lynn?
I think you can do it either way. You can leave it on the agenda and refer it to a study session, or you can request a study session.
Okay, so what we could do, Tom, just in case, I'm gonna give you my personal suggestion. It's up to you. But I think because a lot of residents have concerns in regards to this, I'm giving you a suggestion. It's up to you to maybe keep it on the agenda. So then this way, at least every council member can say maybe a word or two in regards to this. And then give it a little exposure. I'm gonna tell you my personal preference. I'd like to give it a lot of exposure so that we can have an opportunity to be able to listen to the residents. And then from there, we will have, of course, a study session and then be able to have a full discussion. And of course, any resident input can be, can be added at any point. I think that'd be-
If we leave it on the agenda, will we be voting on it?
No. Well, at this particular point, at that particular point, I'm sorry, one of, one of us can make a motion to take it to a study session. And I think, Madam Clerk, that should suffice, correct?
That's correct.
Council Chair?
Uh, Councilman Conston?
I, yeah, and I think our police and fire chief want to say a few words about the issue also. So if it's on the agenda and we move it to a study session-
Well, you know, this is, this meeting's already started late. And I think it'd be redundant to have something said tonight and then again add a special meeting. Well, I-
Council Chair? Councilman Moby Dune?
Can we, maybe we can go through with 9J and S that we, you know, approve this by moving 9J over to a study session? That way, it's approved right from the start. It's still there, but we know it's moving over to a study session?
Yeah. Well, we don't want to approve it. No.
No, no, I mean approve it that we move it straight to a study session.
I think Councilman Moby Dune suggesting approving the agenda as is and then at that particular point move it to a study session. I think, uh-
Can I, um, can I say something?
Go ahead, Councilmen Zuhair.
If Tom would modify his motion to keep it and to discuss it, you know, when it comes up and he can make the motion to take it to study session, and I'll support it.
I'll agree with that. Yeah. I'll change my motion for, to do that.
To approve the agenda as submitted.
Yeah. Do you want to repeat your motion just in case, Councilman Tom?
Well, I'll, I'll, I'm just gonna approve the agenda as submitted. And then when item 9J comes up, then I'll, I'll make the motion.
Excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. The next item on the agenda is gonna be approval of the electronically held regular meeting of February 9th, 2021.
Council Chair?
Councilman Ray Muscat?
Uh, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the minutes for the electronically held regular meeting of February 9th, 2021, as outlined in 4A.
Support. Okay, is there any discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
I'm sorry, Council Chair Pro Tem, who was the support on that?
Uh, there was actually three of them that said it. So who did the first support?
I do.
Or, okay. Councilman Zuhair, was that you? You said that?
Yes.
Okay.
Wasn't me.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. The next item on the agenda, we have public hearings in common. And this is gonna be on agenda items only. This is only items on the agenda today. You have two minutes that you need to state your name, the street that you live on, and the city that you live in. You will have a limit of two minutes. What we've instituted, thank you to our Madam Clerk and her team. They came up with a great idea. I love it. What they're gonna do is she's gonna bring up a sign. So you can see Madam Clerk with the orange sign, and you'll be able to-
Have 30 seconds.
Yep. As a resident, how many more seconds you have left? Obviously, at that particular point, you gotta wrap up whatever particular comment that you have.
Do this.
And then we'll go ahead and, and then you'll have 15 seconds. And then we'll go ahead and go from there. At this particular, particular time, I want to ask, is there any public comments on agenda items from the public?
Council Chair?
Uh, there's a Bill Darwish there. Georgian, are you keeping track of this? Just to make sure. George?
I'm sorry, I, I was going to, I have Vince Dambrowski, or Vince D.
Um, Bill, sorry, um, Madam Clerk, um, Bill Darwish was not sure how he was unmuted. I'm not sure how he was unmuted, but he's muted now. So whatever order you have, um-
I have Vince, Vince D.
Okay.
And I'm gonna start when you're ready. I will start the time.
Okay, good evening, Council. Pro Tem Chair, Council Members, and Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Kind of threw me off what I was going to say about item 9J. I just don't understand why you're gonna switch this to a study session once more when you've been hearing from the residents since 2017 that nobody wants anything to do with this consolidation. One, they feel it's going to violate or put a damper on their safety, let alone what our officers in a safe jeopardy. You're looking at six communities going under one roof, possibly seven. And with that number of communities, if anybody calculated the populations, you're looking over 340,000 residents. Okay? So just keep that in mind. And one more thing I want you to keep in mind is during one of our council meetings, the former mayor, Pleco, stated, uh, when he was talking about joining and buying into the water treatment facility, is he stated, "I'd rather be an owner than a customer." Keep that in mind. We could have merged with Garden City, which would have been perfect. They would have been working for us. Or we would have been, they would have been our customer. And reason why we're in the shape where we're in now is because of lack of planning on the administrations. Three administrations have failed to keep this equipment updated. It's time the residents and the administration work for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince.
Perfect.
Uh, Council, um, just want to make an announcement just for the residents that are part of this meeting, that we as council members are not allowed to comment on these particular public comments. So just so that you're aware, you'd be making a comment to us. We'd listen to it, of course, take it into account, but we're not allowed to debate back and forth on this per the council rules. Thank you. Um-
Excellent.
Do I let on the next person?
Yes, Lisa Hicks Clayton?
Thank you. I'd like to speak as a resident, if I may please.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Chair Pro Tem Abdallah. So, oh yes, my name is Lisa Hicks Clayton. I live on Rouge River in Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan. And I want to encourage the council, and you've already been discussing this, but encourage you to move this to a study session, town hall. But I also want to say, please advertise it. Make sure you're making the information readily available to all of your residents, because not everyone goes to the city's website and looks at the agenda or the cover letter. This decision will affect every single resident in our community. Every one of them deserves the right to have input into this conversation, which is so critical. It's probably one of the biggest decisions you'll be making this year. I would encourage you to engage your residents, but also remember, and I said this back in 2017, the dispatcher is probably the most important person that you may never meet. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Um, then we have Bill Darwish.
Okay, so Bill emailed me and asked for a little extra time.
Okay.
He would like to speak in regards to the Old Colony Pond situation. That's on our agenda for today. So go ahead, Bill. I'm gonna give you a couple of extra minutes.
So you want me to set it for-
Four minutes, please.
Four minutes, okay. That's usually what a couple is. Okay.
Good eve, good evening, Council Chair and Dearborn Heights City Council. Uh, thank you for allowing us to speak today. Um, speaking, address first, 20273 Old Colony, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Um, referencing the Old Orchard Pond in River Oaks subdivision. We were, uh, I went on the city of Dearborn Heights website to check out the, uh, the meeting for this evening. And I noticed that, um, I stumbled on, actually, that the, um, they are gonna be paying the final payment to the company that did the work out there. And we have a few objections to the work that was done there. And also, there's extra charges that we were unaware of on there. Uh, first and foremost, we don't believe the work is completed there. That's first and foremost. Um, and the extra charges that, that are on here, we don't know what they're for. There was damage done to the property, and we had asked them to fix those damages. And they turned around and charged us for those damages. We have proof that there was damage done. We have pictures to show that those damages. We have residents that, um, will stand behind us to show that those damages were there. I particularly live right next door to the clubhouse and never had an issue with standing water or our clubhouse flooding. We've had that happening all summer long. Uh, that's obviously happened because of the work that was done at the, at the pond. Um, they, seems here that Wade Trim has done some testimonial of releasing the money. And so has DPW in okaying the release. Um, we as the taxpayers, the ones who are paying for half of this job, do not agree, uh, that the city pay for this yet. If their money is due, fine, let it be due, but let, let it be due when we know for a fact that the job is done. Our basement had flooded now all summer long. We have some pumps running the water out to the street. And it's caused definitely by the work that was done. We found that a water main was broke underground. Um, they came out and fixed it, and they're charging us for that damage. But it was damaged by trucks going in and out of the property. Um, and it was, it was damaged in the back of the property where all the work was being done. So what we're asking City Council is, before any payment is made, I mean, maybe some money could be released, but not all the money. Until spring, when we know that the frost, the snow has melted, and we know that there's no more flooding happening, and we, we find out what really happened back there, what caused the damage, then maybe we could release some, you know, the rest of the money. But at this point, we do not agree with releasing a total of $78,000 to, um, I don't even know what, they don't have the contractor's name down here, but a total of $78,000 to the, to the contractors.
Okay, thank you, Bill.
I have, um, also, we have our, our attorney here. They'd like to talk if they could have their two minutes also.
Okay, so what I'm gonna do, Bill, um, how many more residents do we have, Lynn, that want to speak, please?
We have eight more, eight more residents.
Eight more? Okay, so, so we stay on the same subject. I'm gonna allow, Bill, you're mentioning there's two other residents that want to speak. I'm gonna allow them two minutes each.
Okay.
A resident?
Just one more, just one more.
Okay, so I'm allowed two minutes each so that at least we stay on the same subject. And then from there, we'll go, we'll go to the rest of the residents. So go ahead, bring-
So we'll start with the two minutes again, right?
Correct, correct.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then if you could say the name and your address and, yeah.
Good evening.
There she is.
Hi there. Samara Khadri. I live at 1320 North Evangeline Street here in Dearborn Heights. Um, I have been retained as council by the association since the very beginning. So since the beginning meetings on this, um, one of the important things I wanted to mention in addition to what Bill has already brought forward to you is that, um, the River Oaks Association, the board, has been part of every single meeting along the way. And at the beginning of this, they were told, um, and it was agreed upon, and I believe it might be in City Council minutes, that they would be part of all of the, um, meetings and agreements and things of that nature. For some reason, they were omitted from the last meeting that happened to discuss this change order number two and this final payment. So I think, I think as part of taking this back and reevaluating and basically doing some research on these figures, is allowing them to participate in that as well. Uh, the other thing is that, um, as part of this notice from February 11th, it says that the, the work was out, this additional work, the $20,000, was outside the scope of the original project and was requested by the River Oaks Homeowners Association. They're, they're, they are both here, and they're both stating that they were not, um, they did not request any of that because it was related to damages that was directly caused by the contractor. So that is all I wanted to add. And I would ask that you, um, not approve this today in full or otherwise, and you allow time to go back and take a look at these figures.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, you want to let the next person in?
Suzanne Todd? And your, your name and the address, yeah.
Suzanne Todd, 411 Academy Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County, Michigan. Um, I'm speaking, of course, to item 9J. I'm gonna be short and sweet on this. Many, most of the residents do not want our 9/11 dispatch outsourced to Dearborn. We, it is better for us to be in a partnership with Dearborn where we would have a say-so in cost and projects and this and that. But as a customer, our hands would be tied, and that, and we don't know what's gonna happen down the road and how much this is gonna cost us. Right now, it's at $900,000 a, a year from what I read. I just think that this is a bad move, that we're either a partner with Dearborn or we have our own 911 dispatch center. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Next, we have Michael Blackburn. I'm sorry, Georgian, did you get that, Michael Blackburn? And then your name and the street that you're located on, in the city?
Mike Blackburn, Arnold Street, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Um, this is in, to reference about 11A, um, I'm hoping State Council votes down 11A. I don't think it's a good idea. I think State Council is overreaching by trying to do the mayor's job. The mayor's job is to appoint people. Um, there's a lot of jobs in that job description that other city officials already do and city lawyers already do. Um, if it is voted in, I urge the mayor to veto it and needs to go to a study session to be talked, uh, talked about, because I got a lot of questions and a lot of legal questions for a corporation council and for other council members on this that cannot talk about right now. So, um, I urge that this gets shut down. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay. Next, we have Lisa Ferens.
Sorry, thank you. I needed to unmute. I would like, uh, to talk about two particular issues. I also had questions about the Old Orchard Pond at River Oaks and the presentation of those charges, because it appeared as though a change order was being presented for approval, and yet the payment was also being requested at the same time, um, which makes no sense from a logistical standpoint, that the approval should have come first. Also, the statement that it was, it improved the driveway. Um, we as taxpayers throughout the entire, um, city are helping to fund this, and it should be put back into the condition that it was. It should not be improved upon at the expense of the other residents. So I do agree with Mr. Darwish and the, uh, attorney that that should be tabled, and there should be more discussion with that contractor. My second topic, as with most people on here, is 9J. And, um, I would not slam the door on the idea of any sort of merger. But as we stated four years ago, when this began, we could get into the program anytime, once we saw that it was up and running and beneficial. However, a, a letter from the Chief of Police or the, uh, Fire Department is not sufficient for me as a citizen to make that kind of important decision. Before we have any future conversation on this, I would like to see the financials. There are five cities currently participating, three of which are extremely financially challenged right now. I would also like to see performance metrics. And I would also like to have the issue of job security for Dearborn Heights dispatchers and their retirement addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Next, we have Pamela.
Hi, Pamela Traskus. I live on Robindale in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County.
Thank you.
Because I work for the, I work throughout Wayne County, so I'm very familiar with this merger and consolidation. And I'm telling you, I have lived in this city since 1963. Get it? This is my hometown. We have already thrown this idea off the bus once. We've had study sessions. Why don't you pull up the history, look up the microfilm, read through this? It doesn't work for us. It might work for other cities. It will not work for Dearborn Heights unless people come to us. Like that other guy said, you know what? Why can't we be the leaders in this and profit? Because we're gonna have some water issue bills coming up here. It doesn't make sense. It just doesn't make sense for us. I vote against it. And if you vote for it, I can't vote for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Pamela.
Okay, next, we have Ray and Chris. And your name and your street address.
Hi, uh, this is actually Becca Graff. Uh, I live on Oakland Drive, uh, Dearborn Heights, Michigan. Um, I just wanted to bring up the merging of dispatch as well. Um, you know, it feels like it's the worst option for us and that, um, I know that dispatch is actually sorely understaffed. And, uh, my boyfriend applied during the pandemic to work and to help with the dispatch staff and has been waiting a whole year to hear back from them, has, you know, sent emails, sent letters, gotten, you know, very little in return. And it seems like, like Vince had said, it, it doesn't seem like it's the best option for us to, um, be the leaders in this. And, you know, I, I feel like the numbers are somewhat inflated. Um, you know, what's, what's a realistic number to get our dispatch up to standards? Um, and, and also, why haven't we done that in the past? You know, if, you know, it's something we need to invest in so that our, our citizens are safe and we're not having to worry about, uh, you know, Dearborn and several other communities being all calling into one dispatch center. Um, that's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, next, we have Gary Miatke.
Gary?
Yeah, it's just a, a reminder in terms of the, um, rules of order with regard to public comment at this point in the meeting. It should only be for items that are currently on the agenda. Item 9J is not currently on the agenda.
It is though.
Yeah, they did. They did it.
The agenda. Um, and it should not include any items under item six. It should also, uh, in terms of someone identifying themselves, they only have to give their name, their street, not their address.
Yes, okay.
And the city that they live in. And, um, basically, people will still have an opportunity to address all of the items, whether or not on the agenda during the regular pub, public comments. Thank you.
Correct. Uh, but Gary, it is just for the residents, it is on the agenda. We end up deciding and voting to keep it on the agenda at this point.
As submitted.
Oh, you know, my apologies. That's correct.
Yes.
Sorry, Council Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Uh, next, we have In God We Trust. So your name, the street address, and the city.
Good evening, Sam, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Garland Street, Wayne County. Uh, talking about item 9H, which is a request from Chief Myers for police ammunition. I'm not, not that much, uh, I don't know if you guys are all familiar with the firearm prices, how sky high it went off, especially during the pandemic, and ammunition prices went sky high as well. I seen them voices for $16,000. Literally, we're paying over a dollar per, for ammo right now. If the police are in need of some ammunition right now, that they're necessary, let them buy whatever they need for now. But I don't think they're, it's very necessary for them to buy over 16,000 ammunition at this period of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam.
Okay. Next, we have Tanya's, um, iPhone? Where is she? Do you have her, Georgian?
Go right ahead.
Just says her name.
And I don't see her.
Um, Tanya, you are unmuted. You can go right ahead.
Your name, your street, and the city? Your name, your street in the city.
You know what, um, you might go to the next person that will come back, or she comes back on.
Absolutely. We have Adam Crot.
Oh, wait, go right ahead.
Hello? Yes, Adam.
We can hear, we can hear you.
Okay, Adam Crot, Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County, Huron Street. I just wanted to also vocalize my displeasure with the merging dispatch. I'm friends with mul, multiple officers at other jurisdiction agencies that use the centralized dispatch. And after their switch, they had a lot of complications, a lot of issues. And a lot of them have vocalized their displeasure to me personally. And I just wanted to vocalize my displeasure with it. That's all.
Thank you, Adam.
Thank you, Adam. Thank you. Then we have, um, Leslie Winless.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Leslie Winless. I live on Annapolis Street and Dearborn Heights, Michigan, uh, four eight one two five. So I was just, um, commenting on agenda item nine J as well. And I would like to have a study session, um, on this particular topic. I had to go to the city of Dearborn study session to get more information on it because I couldn't find anything, um, on the website that was, you know, as detailed as the study session that they, um, provided. And there was a lot of troubling things, um, in their study session that made me want to at least pause or have more information from our own police chief, um, about the merger or consolidation. Um, one of the things was it appears that they have been consistently, um, understaffed. Uh, one position which to me is critical for any dispatch center, which is the manager. Um, right now it's being filled by two, I do not want to butcher their ranks, but they are, um, police officers with the Dearborn Police Department and they are together working to fill the role of the manager for the dispatch center. The other concern that was brought up for me and their presentation about the dispatch center, um, was one of the councilmen brought up that it was supposed to be a cost saving to the city, um, resident, to the resident in the city of Dearborn. And that right now they had not felt that they were getting the cost savings that they originally signed up for. Um, and that even they would honor the contracts they had in place right now and the contracts they had coming in. But they would want the city lawyer to reevaluate this in a few years, um, to increase the amount of their partners, the other cities, the amount that they're bringing in to the program to make sure that it's a cost saving for the city of, um, Dearborn. It didn't seem, which of course that they were concerned at all with the cost savings for any of the other residents. Um, the third thing and last thing was the amount of overtime that their dispatch workers are working, um, religiously consistently. Although they gave all the way from July of twenty twenty to January of twenty twenty-one and it's consistently over a thousand hours, um, of overtime that these dispatch workers are working because of how understaffed that they are. And these hours do not include any police officers that are also helping with dispatch work. And, um, I yield the rest of my time. I just wanted to bring those concerns.
Thank you, Leslie.
We're going to try and, Tanya again?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry about that, everyone. Geez. Okay, my, this is Tanya Sterlini, uh, Westbrook Side, Dearborn Heights.
Okay.
Michigan. Couple of comments again about the outsourcing. First comment, uh, why do we, again, why do we continue to discuss this three years later? Um, I heard there's a problem getting dispatchers. If we are having those issues, it wouldn't Dearborn as well. And it kind of sounds like that from the person before that they are. Um, the other thing is where does the dispatchers, do they fall under the police chief, fire chief? So if they fall under one of those two guys or both, if they're, that job is outsourced, then do, does part of their salary go with that as well? I don't, I don't know how that works and who, who's under that. Um, and as other people have said, you know, if this might be fine now, but down the road, how was it going to impact us financially? Um, I'm willing to pay extra in taxes to have this stay with us. I think it looks better for our city to say we own the nine one one system. We do it. I think it helps draw people into our city that way, keeps value up and it keeps our citizens safe. And the last thing like Lisa had mentioned, we need to broadcast this if we are going to discuss it further. Let the citizens know. Not everyone does Facebook. And, um, we just need to do a better job of telling people what's going on. Our website is not a good resource. It is very, it's not user friendly. So thank you for letting me, um, share my thoughts and have a good night.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you.
Council Chair Pro Tem, I think that's it for the public comments on agenda items.
No problem. Thank you very much for all the residents that commented. I do want to point out something for some of the residents. Um, there is on YouTube and I watched it and I had, uh, other council members, uh, some of them watch it. If you go to YouTube on seven fourteen twenty, and it's called Dearborn Heights Study Session seven fourteen twenty, there is a YouTube presentation of our, uh, police chief Mark Myers, the presentation that he gave to the residents and to us. So if you want like a little bit of an update as far as, uh, at least from previously what had gone on at that particular point, there's a very nice, uh, PowerPoint presentation that our chief gave to us just in case. All right, um, then we have, the next item we have is fund transfers and current claims.
Council Chair.
Mister Chair.
Councilman Ray Muscat.
Uh, I move city council approve, approve current claim six one through six thirty-seven as submitted.
Support. Is there any discussion? Well, I had a question. Um, and this is for Police Chief Mark Myers. Uh, this will be on six thirteen. Can you give us a little briefing? Uh, is he, I assume he's on Mark Myers. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yep, there he is. Uh, can you give us a little bit of a, um, clearing on that one? I know it's, uh, Hutchinson that was at the university, what the purpose of the, those particular classes are and the amount that we paid towards that, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, so one of the things that have been worked into our collective bargaining agreements for both our patrol officers and our supervisors, that officers, um, have the ability to advance their education in police related field up to and including through their master's degree. Um, so Lieutenant Hutchins is now completing his, I believe it's his master's degree, but I'd have to look at the level of, uh, the class on the thing, if it's a four hundred or five hundred level class. Um, but it is a collective bargaining thing. It's an incentive to have officers come here. But we also get to parlay that experience, that training and that education to be used here within Dearborn Heights. So the money although is to advance their education, ultimately when they're lieutenant at our police department, what their, or he or she is learning at that university is directly related and applied here at Dearborn Heights.
Okay, and, and it's excellent. Obviously, I'm, I'm always into education. So this is great. Um, the only concern I had is, and this does, this doesn't necessarily apply just to the police department. I'm talking about in general. Um, we had a situation before and I'm not getting into too much specifics, but where someone was in one of our departments and, um, studied, got a lot of education off of our city money and then went off and did their own thing. So we didn't get an opportunity to take advantage of whatever education that that person got, free at charge through the city a few years back. This would be about six, seven years back. So for some of us that have been on for a while, they'll, we'll, you know, they'll remember that. And I'm trying not to disclose who it is. I'm trying to be careful. Um, with that being the case, how do we provide, you know, guidelines for ourselves to make sure that whoever gets a particular education on our expense is going to be staying there long term? Uh, like maybe as a possibility, one of the things I was thinking of is in case they didn't stay longer term, X amount of years, they'd have to pay us back for the education that they received at our expenses. Is that at all possible? Is there guidelines like that in place?
So, so there's, there is one fail safe, but it has to do with at the end of their careers. Anybody that's within a last segment of their career according to the collective bargaining agreement so many years is not able to take advantage of that program. So it's for officers at the beginning years of their career and it's, it's defined in those collective bargaining agreements. Um, as for a new officer, uh, say they're going to get their master's degree. They do it in a, a decent amount of time, but obviously not as a full-time student. I don't think you could do it as full-time. You're talking two to three years, potentially four years of education. Yes, they are getting that benefit, but over the course of that four years, we're getting those officers here applying what they're learning during those times. So there is no fail safe at this point according to the contractual bargaining agreements, but, uh, collective bargaining agreements rather. But what we do get is an officer who's obviously concerned with that ability to improve themselves. So we hope that translates into the work product that they put out here. I hope that helps.
I, I, I'd just like to see a little bit more fail safe situations. Again, I'm a little paranoid because of the situation we had in a different department. Uh, hopefully, you know, that doesn't happen again, but thank you very much, uh, Chief Myers. And, uh, I had a second question unless some other council person had a question. Okay. Uh, this is for Director Sell Me. Um, if you don't mind just pulling in our residents to, uh, for transfer number thirty-five, thirty-six and thirty-seven, maybe if you could give just a thirty-second, uh, abbreviation as far as why we are paying those particular amounts. Uh, well, we don't, I'm sorry, I should say it, take it back, thirty-five and thirty-six specifically. And I know me and you spoke already, but if you could just, if you don't mind, I had a resident ask me if you don't mind filling us in on those.
Sure, to the best of my abilities, I will do that. So I will, thirty-seven is our monthly sewage disposal bill with the Rouge Valley system, which Wayne County operates. Um, the thirty-five and thirty-six are, uh, tried to do a little research. They are, uh, debt payments. One is for ECPAD, which is the Taylor Basin Improvement, which, uh, I located some papers that, uh, I believe this, it was split between Taylor and Dearborn Heights and it was based on the amount of flow that went through that basin. And that was, I believe off the top of my head, like sixty-some percent for Dearborn Heights and thirty-some percent for the city of Taylor. And I believe that was payment six of nine or something like that, seven oh nine. Um, the other one is for the operations of that sanitary basin.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Sell Me. As usual, great job. All right, um, any other items for discussion on fund transfers and current claims?
Council Chair Pro Tem, the mayor has his hand raised.
I don't see. Okay, Mister Mayor, please go ahead.
You got him?
Thank you, Council Chair Pro Tem. I was going to actually make a comment on the last item that you discussed about education. So this is something, uh, I was discussing with, uh, our, uh, Elizabeth, our HR director. Uh, we, we, we actually thought, talking about, uh, not, not the police department, but, uh, tuition assistance for other department. Just, I mean, just to give you an example, when, when I got my master's degree, the company I worked for, uh, they, they paid for my masters and there was something in, in, in there. It says that, you know, once you, uh, if, if you get a degree from, I mean, from the company pays for your degree, that you have to actually, uh, work for that company for a particular time. So this is something we can look at and, uh, get back with you, Council Chair Pro Tem.
Okay, that's, that's, that's exactly what I'm referencing so that, uh, we don't have that situation again, but thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, any other comments? Okay, that's great. Madam Clerk, you're all set as far as the votes, correct?
Um, the motion, we have the motion and we have the second, we have to take the vote.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay.
All right, next is reports from the mayor. First, we have the FOIA coordinator appointment from Mayor Bazey.
Council Chair.
Chair. Pro Tem.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Ray Muscat.
Uh, I, I moved that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of Chief of Staff Mariana Hernandez to the position of FOIA coordinator for the city of Dearborn Heights per the amended Freedom of Information Act, Act four forty-two of nineteen seventy-six, section fifteen point two three six, section six, uh, one as outlined in eight A.
Support. Okay, any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, Councilman Zohair Abdalhak.
Uh, I would like to ask, uh, the mayor if she is certified, uh, in, uh, FOIA requests or if she is going to be certified to handle this issue.
Mister Mayor. Councilman, thank you, Councilman, uh, Zohair. Uh, we actually, actually had their first, uh, meeting and, uh, they were waiting for the MMRA, uh, training. But we had, she had her first training session already, uh, a week ago.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so just for
Dave? Sorry, I hate to interrupt, but who seconded that?
Uh, who did the second?
Constant.
I did.
I had Bob Constant down.
Okay, excellent.
There was two again.
Just a, just a little comment, I just want to, just for the residents. This mayoral position was already in place. So this is just to replace, uh, uh, different, uh, administrator that we had doing the FOIA request. So it's just continuing on and he has, uh, selected Mariana Hernandez to go for that position. Thank you. All right, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, uh, next under reports from the mayor, we have the planning commission appointment.
Adam Chair. Mister Chair.
All right. I've, I've been called a lot worse, so it's okay.
Uh, that the, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the mayoral appointment of count, of count, of mayor, Bill Bazey of Dr. Ali S. Mackey, who resides on Gulfview in Dearborn Heights to the Planning Commission for a term to expire in January twenty twenty-three. That appointment is to replace Mister Leroy Gavin, who recently out resigned from that position as outlined in eight B.
Support.
Any discussion? Okay, just a quick comment on my end. Just want to thank Mister Leroy Gavin for his, uh, service to the city of Dearborn Heights and I wish him the best with his family and travel schedule. Stay safe.
And, uh, I would like to say something. Thank you, Mayor, for thank you for this appointment. Uh, this is an outstanding, uh, resident in our city.
Thank you. And, uh, I'm also going to just, I'm sorry, Mister Chair.
Yes, Councilman Moby Dune.
Just going to piggyback on this as well to, uh, you know, Dr. Ali S. Mackey, I know him, I know of the family. He's a very good, good man, very respected in our community, even when I was younger. Uh, you know, he always gave me some insight and, uh, congratulations. So if he's out there and he's listening to this, Doc, congratulations. I'm happy to see you on this, uh, planning commission.
Excellent. Mister Mayor, I don't know the gentleman personally, but I did ask around and I heard good things about him. So I wish the best to the doctor.
Thank you, Council Chair.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Next item, we have reports from city officials. First, we have Chief of Staff Hernandez, the FOIA coordinator appointment.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
Uh, I move the Dearborn Heights City Council concur with the appointment of the mayor's executive assistant, Stephanie Shockey, to act on the FOIA coordinator's behalf for non-public safety record request. In addition, appoint the records lieutenant or whoever is performing the records lieutenant's duty in the police department to handle all requests made for records created and/or retained by the police department and the fire marshal in the fire department to handle all requests made for the records created and/or retained by the fire department. The amended Freedom of Information Act, Act four forty-two of nineteen seventy-six, section fifteen point two three six, section six, uh, three states that the FOIA coordinator may designate another individual to act on his or her behalf in accepting and processing requests for public bodies, public records and approving a denial under section five, point four and five is outlined in nine A. Support.
All right, um, motion made by Councilman Ray Muscat, seconded by Councilman Moby Dune. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Abdalhak.
I just would like, uh, to make sure that, uh, those individuals are well-trained to handle this job because it is very important that we give the public the information and we keep the transparency in our city as we promised.
Thank you, Councilman. On my end, what I'd like to ask the two individuals On my end, what I'd like to ask the two individuals is to continue to work for the residents. Uh, I know some residents have made different FOIA requests. Uh, the main thing I personally would like for is to give the information as soon as possible with minimal delays. Um, that's something that's important to me when a resident asks for this and goes through the trouble to ask for this. And as we also know, when uh Councilman Zohair Abdalhak as a resident was a regular in there, he's a V I P as far as.
He's still FOIA, yes.
Yeah, Mr. FOIA, so, but very important to myself and I'm sure to all the other council members that we provide this information in a very timely manner, uh, because they're taking the time, energy, money, et cetera, et cetera, leaving work to do this. That we give the residents this information as fast as possible and just as importantly, like uh Councilman Abdalhak said, for transparency reasons. Any other comments from the council members?
You know, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Moby Dune.
Uh, so I know Stephanie's been working out of that office for a pretty long time, for at least I know. And she does a great job, I think this is something that she's gonna take on, she'll be able to tackle, and I think anything that Stephanie does out there is gonna do a great job. So congratulations to Stephanie as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so motion by Councilman Ray Muscat, seconded by Councilman Moby Dune. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item nine B, and this is from D P W Director Sell Me, approval to purchase asset management software.
Councilman uh. Chair Pro Tem, Dave Abdullah.
Councilman Robert Constant, go ahead.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase of asset management software from Silver Smith Data in the amount of twenty six thousand four hundred dollars with a fifty four hundred dollar annual renewal fee. And in addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the contract after legal review as outlined in nine B.
Support.
Okay, uh, motion made by Councilman Bob Constant, supported by Councilman Moby Dune. Uh, any discussion?
Council Chair.
Councilman Moby Dune.
So I, you know, I was able to read through this, I think, I believe, I when I even went into the mayor's office while you guys were going to an interview with this. I think that this is um, I think this thing's pretty cool, uh, and I know this is gonna help advance our city. Uh, maybe we can ask John Sell Me just to kind of, you know, give the residents a little bit of information on what this is so that the residents can get a better understanding of this. And if you do that to his capacity, I know that this is fairly new, I don't know, he may not know as much, but I know that there's a lot of cool gadgets to this, and I would like some of the residents to know that, you know, when you're spending this amount of money, that at least they know that it's going towards a good cause.
Yes, Director Sell Me.
Yes, thank you for for the opportunity. So uh, this is like it says, an asset management program. So basically, what it is gonna do for us, we're gonna try to transition away from paper. Um, so when a call comes in for a com, you know, uh, a street sweeping, uh, tree trimming, ideally, it's gonna be used in the waterfront first, so anytime we go to a home, repair a broken water main, we locate a service, we work on a hydrant, we work on a valve, we have the capabilities of now to put all our work that we did on that job at that time uh and and track it there, so it's always there, it's a live database going forward. So uh, in in the future, when other people come along, you'll have this database set up, so you have a good record management system. Secondly, when a complaint does come in, we are gonna transition to do tree trimming and some other things with it. So when a resident calls, we're no longer gonna write it on a sticky note and hand it off. We can't track it that way, it's not very good for customer service. This will allow us to improve our customer service. Uh, once that complaint is lodged within fifteen days, it hasn't been acknowledged, uh, addressed, it pops back up. So it doesn't fall off the table, you know, when somebody's desk had, you know, a stack of papers and, you know, geez, I don't know what happened to that residence complaint. So, and secondly, it also, the tablets have uh GPS capabilities. So when we are out in the field, we can GPS our assets, meaning like, uh, we could do a tree, we could do a fire hydrant, we can do a gate valve, we can do a stop box, uh, storm sewer, sanitary sewer, so all those different types of assets, we can start to build this database and on the go-forward thing. And then and then the the workers in the field have this at their at their uh fingertips to to help them, make them more effective and efficient in their jobs.
Okay, thank you, Director Sell Me, um, I had a question for you also. I was on that meeting, uh, the Zoom meeting for that particular program and um, you know, obviously, it was like uh GPS or Google Maps on steroids, I mean, it's a pretty cool system. Uh, one of the questions I had for you, I do know that the assessor's office, who are doing a great job and have done a great job for quite a while in our city, but also that they'll be using this particular program. With that being the case, I do know that they're on a contractual basis with us as a city. So since uh we pay them contractually to handle that department from A to Z, what percentage of this would be used by them, and if that's the case, if it's minimal, that doesn't matter, but if it's a little bit more than minimal, then would it not be fair to say that a part of this should be paid by the assessor's office? Depending on what percentage would be used, I don't know, you guys would know better.
Right, so this is actually something totally different than that program that they were looking at. So this is, this is more of an asset management for public works, but the the overlays on there do have maps and uh uh plotted property lines and things of that nature, there may be some value for them, we definitely would share it with them, and if there is some value, then we could talk about, you know, cost sharing or something along those lines, but this is something separate than what we viewed the other day.
Okay, thank you very much, Director, any other council members have any items for discussion?
Um, Council Chair Pro Tem, Gary Miyake has his hand raised.
Yes, uh, I don't see him.
I can, I can.
Yes, please unmute him, please.
Okay. There you go.
If I may suggest uh just a slight change in the wording, uh, that it be uh subject uh to legal review and any changes or additions recommended by Corporation Council. Cause I already can see that there are a couple of, at least minor things that I'd wanna uh end up changing uh in this agreement. Thank you.
So moved. Uh, Councilman Robert Constant, you're in agreement with this?
Yes.
Sorry, uh, Councilman Ray Muscat is the one that made the motion. Councilman Muscat?
No, I.
Constant made it.
I had Constant and Moby Dune second.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is nine C, and this is D P W Director Sell Me, Dearborn Heights Parkland Pump Station Maintenance Service Proposal.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ray Muscat.
Uh, I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve uh HESCO to provide Parkland Park Pump Pump Station maintenance in the amount of three thousand four hundred and fifty per year for the next two years as Wade Trim no longer provides this service. After an initial two-year period, the city council will have the option to extend the contract for up to three years for a three percent increase in fees each extended year. In addition, authorize the mayor and clerk to sign a new contract on behalf of the city as outlined in nine C.
Support.
All right, motion made by Councilman Ray Muscat, supported by Councilman Constant, any discussion?
Council Chair or Council Pro Tem?
Councilman Ray Muscat.
Uh, I guess maybe Mr. Sell Me can answer this question. Uh, is this going to be a preventative maintenance thing where they'll be there uh once a month, uh, once every two months to check and make sure that the pump station is operational, or is this just when we break down?
No, so uh, both, actually, so there is a monthly inspection that they do do, uh, it's part of the retainer of that three thousand. Uh, a few months back, the council approved a new uh alarm system dialing system, so it's more proactive now, that has already been installed. And my recommendation to go with the HESCO group is the four people that used to work with the Wade Trim group. Um, Wade Trim, like you said, doesn't provide that service anymore, and they went over to HESCO. So and HESCO is a local company here in Michigan, they do this type of work uh throughout the throughout the state and other areas in the country. So I thought it was prudent that we keep the same four people on board and continue with that for the next couple of years.
Thank you. Any other items for discussion?
Council Pro Tem.
Uh, can't see who's, is that Councilman Moby Dune?
No.
Councilman Wenzel.
Okay, Councilman Wenzel, go.
Um, the 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 contracts for two years, and then it said that uh that that we could renew their contract at three percent. Does that leave us open to renegotiate their contract and possibly lower the amount? Or if we keep them on, we have to give them the three percent? I mean, I I don't understand what that meant.
So I think, well, what it, my takeaway is that if the city was, city council was gonna entertain to keep that firm, um, that they would seek a three percent increase. Um, I'm sure everything's negotiable, and secondly, you could always put out a bid to to do that also.
All right, thank you.
Any other comments from council members? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The eyes have it. Next item on the agenda is item nine D, and this is D P W Director John Sell Me, Old Orchard Pond Contractor Certificate for Payment Number Four and Change Order Number Two Approval.
Mr. Council Chair, Dave Abdullah.
Councilman Robert Constant.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the contractor's certificate for payment order number four for seventy eight thousand fifty seven dollars and ten cents and change order number two for an increase of twenty thousand six hundred fifty two dollars and twenty one cents. The contract increase reflected in change order number two is for removal of an additional tree, improving the driveway at the site, placement of additional storm pipe and additional inspection time. This work was outside the scope of the original project and was requested by the River Oaks Homeowners Association. The cost for this work is taken from the thirty thousand dollar contingency approved in the Special Assessment District Financing, and the project has been completed under the approved Special Assessment District Amount of three hundred and sixty thousand one hundred ninety six dollars and fifty cents is outlined in nine D.
I'm gonna support this, so to open up a dialogue.
Yeah, Council, Council Chair, can I, can I just uh interject for one quick second here?
Yes, go ahead, uh, Director.
So, so two things, um, I heard the concerns uh earlier about the citizens' uh concerns.
Wait, uh, Director, if you don't mind, let me just do the, let me just do the motion, who was seconded by, then we'll open it for discussion, I thought you were gonna add some. So just give me a quick second. So the motion is uh made by Councilman Constant, seconded by Councilman Ray Muscat. At this particular point, I'm gonna go ahead and open it to discussion, and Director Sell Me, please go ahead.
All right, thank you again, sorry for the interruption. So, um, first thing, first and uh foremost, there is a typo on my uh cover sheet. That three sixty is incorrect, it should be three ten, that was what the S A D was sent uh set for. So just a point of clarification on that. Secondly, I would offer maybe a friendly emotion to table this item and that we uh, we meet, we being uh myself, Wade Trim, the contractor and a representative of the Old Orchard Pond Neighborhood Association, so we can go over this in detail, we can address their concerns. We can explain what happened here, this wasn't, we weren't trying to do anything to uh, I don't know, to to be less than honest or something, I don't know what to say about that, but the, we can go over the details, we can, we can talk about whose responsibility is what, you know, so I think those four parties would be a a good solution, we can go through that, get everybody on the same page and and a good understanding of the charges and uh and that. And the one thing that I believe it was Mr. Darwish said, stated about uh retainage, we do still have retainage because we have to wait till springtime because of the plantings and some of those items, this is not a cl- uh, contract closeout. Um, but certainly willing to sit down with the group and work work through this, so everybody's on board.
Thank you, Director Sell Me, I know I seen, uh, unless you have somebody else, uh, Madam Clerk, but I see the, our attorney, Gary Miyake trying to speak, so Gary, slide.
Uh, thank you, Council Chair Pro Tem, yes, uh, Ms. Cadri uh had previously addressed this matter. Uh, she is the attorney, I would like to also be included in the meeting as well. Um, uh, she had left me a voicemail message, and uh I believe I should also be included in that meeting uh with Mr. Sell Me and any sort of representatives from Wade Trim, thank you.
I I think it's a good idea, Gary, thank you. Was there another council member? Comment, uh, Councilman Robert Constant.
I move to amend my motion to uh table this item and refer it back to D P W and for the attorneys to further discuss it.
Support.
Support, I heard somebody else saying something.
Zohair Abdalhak supported it.
Okay, so motion amended by Councilman Robert Constant, supported by Councilman Zohair Abdalhak. Any other discussion items? So all in favor to table this, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? The amended motion carries.
Thank you.
That verbiage, does that suffice for what you guys are looking to do? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, so now we're on item nine E, and this is from Fire Chief Dave Brogan, permission to purchase lockers.
Council Chair.
Uh, Councilman Moby Dune.
I move the motion that the Dearborn Heights City Council approves the purchase of six lockers for the headquarters from Ray Haven Group in the amount of four thousand nine hundred seventy dollars. Including installation, the lockers will be paid from the capital outlay upon receipt as outlined in nine E.
Support.
Okay, so we got a motion by Councilman Moby Dune and supported by Councilman Ray Muscat, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it. Next item on the agenda is item nine F. And on nine F, we have our Human Resources Director Sabora Perry, Budget Amendments.
Council Chair, Council Pro Tem.
Yes, Councilman Ray Muscat.
Uh, I move Dearborn Heights approve an increase in compensation to Mr. Watlin in the Building Department. The director's position is currently budgeted at fifty five thousand five hundred due to Mr. Watlin taking the responsibility of the director's position, in addition to his inspector duties, his compensation will be raised to sixty five thousand dollars. This would become effective of, as of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. In addition, redirect two thousand five hundred from part-time account number one oh one dash six nine one dash seven oh seven point one zero zero to the salaries account, one oh one dash six nine one dash seven oh six dot zero 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 in the Recreation Department for the salary increase to Mr. Brian Hadad. Mr. Hadad's compensation will be raised from fifty one thousand five hundred to fifty four thousand effective as of February sixteenth, twenty twenty one, as outlined in nine F.
Support.
Okay, motion by Councilman Ray Muscat, supported by Councilman Tom Wenzel, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Councilman Moby Dune.
So I I just wanna, you know, for the record, I wanna keep it that I I am in support of this, but I, you know, I just wanna, you know, from what I said in the last meeting, I know that our new director is going to be, uh, Mr. Watlin will be working the inspector and the director position, um, and so we're actually going to be saving almost fifty thousand dollars, is this correct? Can, can.
I believe he's a master electrician and it's gonna be correct, pretty close.
Right.
About fifty thousand.
Mayor to answer that for you. Mayor Bazey?
Mutant.
Elizabeth, did you wanna time in a little bit on this? Yeah, cause I know Elizabeth and I discussed this earlier.
Sure, great.
Sure, that is the, that is the situation with regards to Mr. Watlin. Not only are we saving on the salaries, we would also be saving on the potential benefits of any other person that would come onto the team, right, as a full-time employee. So that's where we would save, and uh, we did talk to the union. Hopefully you can hear me, we did talk to the union on that matter. And so um, that that's where that is, um, and then if you don't mind, the salaries um that you, on the second piece, also is reflective of a change in leadership in the Recreation Department um with the exchange of positions and the realignment of responsibilities between the deputy and the director.
Okay, okay, so so but now, now my next question is, um, you know, say, you know, and thank you so much, Mr. Watlin, for being able to do that and congratulations on on that new position and on the increase in the pay. new position and on the increase in the pay and thank you for saving the taxpayers all this money. Now, are we gonna be able to say that he's gonna be doing this, uh, for the next year and look back at potentially hiring somebody else as well? So, cuz can the mayor answer that question for me? And this is just something that I wanna know, like, that, that's nice that we're gonna be doing this, this is great, but I wanna make sure that if we're doing this, that there's a time period, we're not saying three months down the line, we need another inspector and in reality, we didn't say fifty thousand dollars because we had to rehire a new inspector. So can we, can, can we put a timestamp on at least saying a year or two to know that at least that, that, so that the taxpayers can benefit from this? Um, and, and so that's just my questions.
Well, I, I, I can tell you right now, I discussed it with the director, he's, he's, he's been doing the work, uh, from, from long time ago, so I'm pretty sure it's gonna be a lot longer than a year, so as of right now, he doesn't need anybody to come in, uh, to do what he is already, what, what he was doing already.
Okay, okay, well, I thank you for that and I, and I really thank Mr. Watland. And, uh, and I thank, uh, Mr. Hadad also and congratulations to him as well. Um, and I hope that, you know, this gets passed on for you guys, if it's saving taxpayers to all this money. As long as it's, you know, we don't come back to this in eight months and say, hey, we just hired a new inspector. And, you know, we end up losing the fifty thousand that we thought we're voting on in support of, that's all.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any other discussion from the council members?
Yes.
Councilman Zohair Abdalhak.
I heard that there is exchange of leadership in the recreation. Would you please, uh, Mr. Mayor or Elizabeth, explain to the, to the residents what you meant by that?
Well, we, we actually have, uh, we did have a change of, uh, leadership and, uh, Parks and Rec, so, uh, Kim Constan is the new director for Parks and Recs.
Congratulations, Kim.
Any problem with the union concerning the deputy?
No, oh, Elizabeth wants to.
Yeah, I, I, I can speak to that, so it wouldn't be a union issue, it would be a civil service, um, i- issue if there was an issue. Um, so the mayor did do a temporary appointment that was on the last public civil service agenda, which was just last week. Um, so we're in compliance with that, um, and, and in compliance with the ordinance as it relates to civil service. We're just very happy that, um, you know, we have the team in place, the team intact to propel this, this recreation department and this city forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Elizabeth.
Council Pro Tem.
Yes, go ahead, uh, Councilman Tom Wenzel.
Yeah, I want, I, I was going to say congratulations to Kim Constance on her, uh, long due overdue appointment, uh, as Director of Parks and Recreation. And I wanted to reassure Councilman Baydun that, in event that our new Building Department Director decides to leave or not do both duties anymore, we have the power to, uh, reduce the salary anyway. So we would, we would, we wouldn't be worried about that situation at all. Thank you, and, and I just wanna, if, if it's okay, Mr. Chair, if I can just comment just one last. Thank you, I, I don't want anybody to think of Mr. Watland or, or, I know this is a friend of, uh, of, of Mr. Tom Wenzel and he's, I hope to be a friend of mine as well, once I get to meet him. Uh, congratulations, I think this is awesome, I just wanna make sure that, you know, when I hear that we're saving fifty thousand dollars, that we have a gentleman that's going to take on two jobs, I love hearing that, it's amazing. Uh, so congratulations to that and thank you for doing that. Um, and I also wanna congratulate Kim Constance and I wanna thank, uh, Mr. Brian Hadad as well and congratulating him on his increase on pay as well, so I think this is a win-win-win all across for the employees and for our residents, so I think this is a great motion today. I wish I would have been Muscat, Muscat and I would have been the one.
You know, I wanna also add something, Council Chair, if you, if I may, please. Thank, thank you, Council Chair Pro Tem. And, uh, Mr. Watland also for the last, since I've been, uh, since I've been here, I've seen some of the improvements, uh, the department has brought forward. And I'm sure you've seen it also too, Council Chair, uh, Pro Tem. Uh, some of that, uh, we've been getting a lot of positive feedbacks, you know, from, uh, from different residents. You know, uh, of things that have been closed, you know, uh, there's CFOs have been closed. Uh, a lot of projects are coming forward, they're, they're being answered by Mr. Watland, he's actually working long hours to make sure that some of these files are closed, he's been, he's been here all early in the morning and late afternoons, he's been on the road. Also, he's been coming on some weekends to, uh, take care of some of the issues. So it's not just like he's doing, you know, just the two jobs, he's actually doing, he's going way and beyond, uh, to make sure that the building department is run efficiently.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I, I also would like to say congratulations to Rick Watland, uh, I'm hearing good things coming from the residents and, uh, also some of the realtors as far as the job that he's doing, so good job and congrats to our new Recreation Director, Kim Constan, I wish you nothing but the best. And I also thank, uh, Brian Hadad for his continuous service in that department, I'm sure he'll have a lot of great responsibilities and I look forward to both of you guys making great changes on behalf of the residents. And lastly, I've, I've complimented before, but will compliment again, Elizabeth Perry. Do a great job in HR, keep up the good work.
Yes, for sure.
My pleasure, my pleasure.
So, and don't let Tony take the credit for you, Elizabeth. So, all, all in favor of, uh, motion nine F, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next item on our agenda is item nine G. And this one is for Parks and Recreation Deputy Director Con- well, um, actually, uh,
You're like Elizabeth, is it officially now or?
So do we say Director Kim Constan?
Yes.
Okay, so this is from, uh, cuz they have it on here, Deputy Director, so I just wanted to make sure, address it the proper way. So Parks and Recreation Director Kim Constan, National Recreation Parks and Association Certification.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ray Muscat.
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council received note and file, uh, uh, on the National Recreation and Parks Association Certificate for Parks and Recreation, uh, Director, uh, Kim Constan as outlined in nine G.
Support.
So, motion made by Councilman Ray Muscat, supported by Councilman Zohair Abdalhak, any discussion?
Sorry, my.
Any discussion on this? Okay, uh, actually on this one, I don't believe we vote on there, is that correct, Madam Clerk? You're muted.
Yes, you still vote, it's just a received note and file.
Okay, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is from our Police Chief, Mark Myers, requesting a purchase and pay for munition supplies.
Council Chair Dave Abdullah.
Councilman Robert Conston.
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council approve the purchase and payment of munition supplies for patrol operations and training purposes in the amount of sixteen thousand four hundred twenty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents to be paid from the Police Department's ammunition account is outlined in nine H.
Reported, okay, motion made by Councilman, uh, Constan, supported by Councilman Ray Muscat, any discussion? Okay, uh, Chief Myers?
Yes, sir.
There he is, alright, so I know we spoke on this, uh, not on this, I'm sorry, we spoke to a couple of other, uh, other items and, uh, I apologize for forgetting to ask you this particular question, cuz that was on my notes at time, but forgot to ask. And, and excuse my ignorance, but with the amount of bullets that we are purchasing, and I'm gonna add an asterisk to this, I don't know whether residents asked, uh, you know, if this is the right time to buy that many bu- bullets, so if you don't mind addressing that for the resident also, uh, the resident was Sam, I believe. Uh, but on my end, I, and, and again, excuse my ignorance, I'm just curious, why so many bullets? Is that primarily for training? Is there a war we're moving into, just, uh, where are we at with this thing?
So, first of all, it's a budgeted item, we send a budget at the beginning every year, so we allocate for this type of, of expense. Um, it's both training, it is operational duty, duty ammo does age and go bad, so duty ammo has to be, um, replaced. Training, um, although it's used the least frequently firearms, it holds the greatest amount of liability, so we have to be properly trained. We have to train four to, I believe we train quarterly, so four times a year, that's mandatory. We also have voluntary training, because the more proficient our officers are, we're responsible for every one of those bullets. So as for timing and the cost, the cost is not going to get better. Um, there, depending on who's in office, uh, it's a political item, guns get more expensive, ammo gets more expensive, it ebbs and flows. Um, this purchase is being made right now, we will hope to get this ammunition in before the next budget cycle. It's not guaranteed. Um, that is how hard it is to purchase ammunition at this time. So, we're planning to get it, we hope we get it, but though, we have, there was one year that we couldn't even get ammo that we were trying to purchase. So, um, that is actually not a lot of ammo, uh, cuz we were in a lull last year. Um, we weren't able to train, um, like we normally would because of COVID restrictions even for us. So we're not actually asking for as much ammo as we traditionally do.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you very much, appreciate you filling me in. Any other further discussion on this?
Council, Pro Tem.
Councilman Tom, uh, Tom Wenzel.
Yeah, Chief, um, buying this much ammo, I don't know if that's a lot or, uh, you, you stated this ammo goes bad. Uh, we're not gonna have a chance of buying so much where this ammo is gonna go bad, are we?
No, that's not where we do it, I didn't, when I say it goes bad, we carry duty ammunition and we can't, we practice with training ammunition. There's different costs for those. The duty ammunition, we have to switch out after so many months, days, years, whatever you wanna call it, so those gets replaced. Training ammunition is used for our training qualifications, so we actually don't use the most expensive ammunition to train with, we use that to deploy.
Is this for both ammos, for both training and, uh, and duty? Yeah, okay.
And this is an annual expense that we budget for.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, thank you, Councilman Tom, any other questions? Or discussions from our council members? Okay, that being the case, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is item nine I, and this is Police Chief Myers, request for approval for the Clemis IT Agreement.
Council Chair.
Councilman Ray Muscat.
Uh, I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the agreement between Oakland County and a city of Dearborn Heights for the purpose of providing information technology services for the public body pursuant to Michigan law. This is an agreement with Clemis IT Services, which is used for law enforcement records, management system and other related technology. In addition, authorize the mayor and s- city clerk to sign the agreement on behalf of the city as outlined in nine I.
Support. Motion made by Councilman Muscat, supported by Councilman Constan, is there any discussion?
Council Chair, Council Pro Tem.
Councilman Ray Muscat.
Uh, I received a lot of phone calls about this and I didn't even bother to call Chief Myers because I, I think I know the answer. That this is one great thing to have. And the reason people say, why Oakland County, because Oakland County owns it. Uh, they're, they're the ones who put it together and it really frees up our police officers, uh, uh, a, a bit and takes, uh, and, and manages their day quite a bit when they have to stop somebody and write a ticket and, uh, it's just, it's a, it's just a great i- idea to have, right? A great IT thing to have, um, uh, and so, and, and it, it goes to supporting our police department, so that's my opinion on it and I, I think I'm correct by saying it was Oakland County's baby and that's who we go through, so. And if Mr. Mu- Mr. Myers or Chief wants to respond to that, I'd appreciate it.
So I, I can, uh, back in roughly two thousand and six, um, police world started to try to catch up with the rest of the professional world and modernize their systems and go digital and computerized. Um, Oakland County created a, uh, a company, for the lack of a better word, called Clemis, that is a record management system specific for law enforcement. Um, they started in Oakland County, it is now the largest in Michigan. Um, I don't have their exact numbers, but you're talking hundreds of agencies throughout the state that utilize their record management system, their traffic crash system, their citation system, their picture link, their, um, AFIS system for fingerprints to the federal, state and local levels. This is a all one-stop shopping law enforcement technology for what they would like to see all of Michigan. Um, but that most agencies, especially in southeast Michigan, participate in. Um, it is the most cost-effective way of providing those services, uh, to the residents of southeast Michigan and anybody that they provide, we have used them since I believe it was two thousand and six. And this is the continuation of that contract.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chief, uh, any other discussions? Chief, I failed to do this at the last meeting, so I, I just wanna bring it up right now and I know it's not the exact, but just wanted to thank the men and women in blue for the job they've done, when I read in the paper that we're, uh, tenth safest city in all of Michigan. That was impressive, so, uh, just wanted to thank you guys for doing everything you can to help our residents and, and keep us all safe, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, that's amazing, number ten in all the state of Michigan, I feel we're number one.
Right, right, well, alright, uh, next item on the agenda is item nine J and this is.
I think we have to vote on that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Apologize for that.
Council Pro Tem.
Yes, Councilman Tom Wenzel.
Yeah, um, originally, I, um, I was thinking about having this, uh, for the study session and, uh, at a, uh, town hall meeting. But after hearing the, uh.
Alright, Councilman, we're just gonna vote on the one right before that, so let me just, uh, I missed the vote, let me just do the vote.
Nine I.
So on nine I, uh, first of all, any other discussions? Hearing none, uh, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is from Police Chief Myers, request for approval for Police and Fire Dispatch Services Agreement. Okay.
Council Chair Pro Tem, Dave Abdullah.
No, Council, Council Chair. Yes, um, I was, originally, like I said, I, I was gonna ask to take this to a study session in a, in a public forum hearing or something like that, um, but after listening to all the residents and, uh, uh, taught, and I, I personally talked to over a dozen Dearborn Heights Police Officers and, uh, a couple in Dearborn and several of the dispatchers in Dearborn Heights and Dearborn. Um, I think we should do the right thing by, um, representing the residents of Dearborn Heights and, uh, voting this down, so I'd like to make a motion to, uh, vote on Police Chief Myers' request for approval of the Police and Fire Dispatch Service Agreement as outlined in nine J.
Second.
Okay, so you, your motion, Tom Wenzel, if you could, uh, do a clarification, your motion is to table this, you said?
No, to vote on it.
To vote on it, okay, so you want to put up for a vote right now, because originally we talked about tabling it to a study session.
Yeah, but we've had study sessions on this and the, the residents have spoken, we're, we're, we're the mouthpieces of the residents. I think, uh, this is the time to, uh, put this to bed either way, right now.
Mr. Chair.
Council, Council Pro Tem.
Uh, Councilman Zohair Abdalhak.
I would like, uh, you know, my friend, the town to clarify, do you want to vote to remove it from, uh, basically for, vote on it not to be approved?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Okay, so is there any second on it, first of all?
I second it.
Okay, so seconded by Councilman Zohair Abdalhak, uh, any discussions?
Council, Council Pro Tem.
So the next person, if you don't mind, Councilman Ray Muscat, Councilman Moby Dun, go ahead.
Uh, so, you know, I know this is very controversial, I've received lots of phone calls regarding this. Believe it or not, in support of this and in not in support of it. Um, I've had, you know, residents tell me, which makes a ton of sense, I don't wanna see anybody lose their job from being, you know, in the dispatch center, but there could be a potential where they can be going to Dearborn, uh, but then you have also other residents that say, hey, Mo, my taxes are already too high, I don't want my tax to be high. I feel like I don't know enough information on this, I know that today you said to look back at the July fourteen. Uh, so I, I wasn't, you know, unfortunately I was not on that meeting, I may have watched it on YouTube, but being that there was a study session, I, I'm not sure if I did. Um, I don't know enough to be able to vote with my conscious one hundred percent on this, and I know that, you know, initially, I, I actually gotta, I felt so relieved knowing that.
And I know that, you know, initially I actually got a, I felt so relieved knowing that this was going to go to a study session. I was going to be able to look at both sides. Everybody's going to be able to voice their opinion. Maybe we can even make it allow, which I'm sure they are, I think the study session, they're open to the public.
Ah, yes, correct.
So I mean, you know, that way you can have, you know, our chief of police, maybe the fire and the police chief there. I can get a little bit of a better understanding. The residents can come and voice their opinion. And at the end of the day, we all want to do what's best. And as Councilman Wenzel said, we are the voice for the residents, but I don't feel like I know enough. So I, it's hard for me to be able to vote on this, to shut it down or to leave, you know, to vote on it or vote against it. So I would ask the Honorable Counsel to allow this to be able to go to a study session just so that I can feel comfortable with which way I vote. Because really, it's, it's a really hard vote and I can't just tell you, I know enough on this information. It showed up on us and I found out about this on Thursday. Here we are on Tuesday and we're looking to make a decision to potentially, you know, and I know some residents are okay with increasing their taxes, but there are others that are not okay with it. And I know that there are some residents that are okay with sending this over to Dearborn. There are someone that are not okay with sending this over to Dearborn. So I, I don't ultimately have a vote that I can make right off the rip. So I would.
I appreciate it. Councilman Zohair, if I could let, if you don't mind, Councilman Ray Muscat, who's next? Councilman Ray Muscat, go ahead.
Thank you, Council Pro Town. You know, I, I received a lot of phone calls too. And I spoke with Councilman Badun and Councilman Zohair Abdallah and also with Councilman Robert Constant. And this is tough. And, you know, I, I believe the last time we spoke that we, we kind of agreed, I do believe to a public hearing, which is a little bit different than a study session. Okay?
I'm for that.
And, you know, a public hearing would be ideal. You know, the, the residents need to know that if we don't do this, we have to rebuild our 911 system. It's going to cost us money. Okay? People will say they don't want their taxes raised, but if they don't want this, they're going to have to pay taxes. My personal opinion on this is this should have been a ballot issue all along. This is a lot of money that we spend. Okay? This is no different than bonds and, and things of that nature. The city is somewhat divided. I can't say if it's 50/50 or 60/40. But with the phone calls I get, right now it's sitting at 100% against. But then not everybody's calling me. 10 phone calls doesn't add up to 60,000 people. But, you know, this, to me, it should be a ballot issue. We've got an election coming up in August. And the quicker we do something, maybe we can get it on a ballot and solve this. Let the people solve it. This is their 911. Okay? Now, I don't know if Mr. Miyaki knows what the legal ramifications of that are, if we can even put it on the ballot. But that's my feeling on the thing. Okay? And maybe you can turn this over to Mr. Miyaki to say something if, if I'm going to.
Okay, I will do that if you don't mind, Councilman Ray. I'm going to go with Councilman Zohair Abalhak.
That's fine.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Dave. I am not against the police. I'm willing to give them anything to do their job, no matter what this. I want their safety first and I want the safety of our resident. And I received lots of calls too today and yesterday. I remember last year when city of Dearborn put $864,000 in their budget as revenue from Dearborn Heights from dispatch. When the mayor was asked in open session, he said, I don't know anything about it. And now all of a sudden, within a week or so, we have this agreement in front of us. I am going to ask our chief of police, please provide us, the city council, at least with information, you know, the financial benefit and the financial burdens on us. And I agree with Ray. After we see those numbers, we need to ask our resident, either by, you know, public hearing or by ballot initiative. Otherwise, you know, we're doing, doing ourselves this service into the resident this service. Because at the end of the day, I believe our residents willing to pay anything for their safety. So let them decide what to do.
Okay. Who would, I'm going to go with Councilman Robert Constant. I think you were trying to say something, but then I'm going to go.
Yes. Quickly, Councilor Chair, Dave Abdullah. You know, our discussion was to get a report about the current status of the joining the Dearborn Area Dispatch being the seventh community and joining the six other communities about the, the costs, the benefits. And we have not heard that information. I spoke to the chief at length. I spoke to yourself and I spoke to Councilman Ray Muscat. Would, would, would like to hear some more information and also want to hear from our police chief and fire chief and our new mayor as to their viewpoint. But after we get some, some additional information, I received a call, for example, someone called and said, well, we, we don't need to sell our, our dispatch. We're not selling it. We're, most of the state of Michigan now, most of the regions have dispatch centers that are several communities. So I think we need, just to move this to a study session and hear the additional information. The study session can be open to the public and then we can hear from the experts. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. I'm going to go, Chief, if you don't mind, I'm going to go with our attorney, Gary Miyaki. Now I'll go to you next, unless Lynn, there was nobody else before the chief, was there? So Gary, go ahead.
To address Councilman Muscat's concern, I guess it would be possible to end up having something along these lines approved, but very difficult to imagine that this would be, I mean, we have moving parts in this situation. We have the city of Dearborn that would need to wait for us to essentially do something along these lines. I know that Chief Myers has been very diligent in addressing these, these issues with the city of Dearborn and negotiating with the city of Dearborn. And frankly, I don't know how patient the city of Dearborn would be with respect to this particular issue. So while it would be possible, some of it would depend on the city of Dearborn being willing to leave this matter open in this fashion to wait for us to have a vote and so on and so forth. I hope that answers your question, Councilman.
It, it, it does, but you know, we can't always rely on what somebody else does for the, for, for our residents. We've got to take care of our residents first. And, you know, unfortunately, I, I think that putting it on a ballot, let them decide what they want to do and how they want to do it, or we pay for it, or we pay Dearborn. It's, it, to me, it should be up to, to, to the residents. This is, this isn't, this is about safety. This is not paying $900,000 for a fleet of brand-new cars. Okay? This is, this is safety. So to me, everyone should have a vote in how and what they want. So that's my.
It's more than just money.
Yes, so it, it, it's just, that's, that's the opinion I have. And, and I also want to protect the workers of, of, of the 911. These people, from what I read on the contract, it's not going to be easy for them to get a job there. If they were good enough to be for Dearborn Heights, 911, they ought to be able to go anywhere and get a job immediately without hesitation. They shouldn't be put on any waiting program or testing or anything. They know what they're doing. They know the city of Dearborn Heights.
Councilor Chair.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilor Gary Miyaki, go ahead.
Thank you. And, and Councilman, I express no opinion about the merits or the lack of merits of this proposal. That's not my role. I'm, I'm merely mentioning that the idea of putting it on the ballot and the city of Dearborn may say, well, we're not interested in partnering with you at this time if they're waiting. So that would have to be something that would have to be explored with the city of Dearborn to make this an actual viable option for city residents. You know, if it was put on the ballot.
I, I, I thank you for that and I, and I appreciate your candor. But Dearborn, city of Dearborn won't have a problem filling it if it's as good as they say it is. So that's again, my opinion only.
Okay. Thank you, Attorney Gary Miyaki. Was there any other discussions or comments? I know the chief's got some comments. Go ahead, Chief Myers.
Yeah, I was, I was hoping that maybe the clerk can share my screen with me because I want to share the, the email that I sent to all the council people. I think all the residents should be able to see that as well, if that's possible.
Georgie, and you got him? Thank you.
Let me know if you can see an email up there.
Can't hear him.
So I, I just made you a call host, chief. So if you want to go ahead and share whatever screen you have for us.
All right, let me get through screen sharing. Trying to find it. It's not letting me do it. Well, I'll tell you what, is if you're okay, I'd like to, because I, I think there's some misunderstanding. But I'd like to read the email that was sent and I.
Can't hear him.
Twice.
I can, we can hear him.
You can hear us?
I can hear him. I can hear you fine, chief.
We can all hear you.
I can hear.
It was dated February 19th, Friday, February 19th, at 8:08, right after this packet went out. It said, "Council members, upon your review of the council agenda scheduled for February 23rd, 2021, item nine J is a request for approval of agreement for consolidated dispatch services with the city of Dearborn. I requested the agreement be placed on the agenda so you may start your review process of the document. Your timely approval of this agreement is essential to the effectiveness of our public safety services. I am fully aware that the council may request a special study session to again review both the operational and financial benefits of participating in Consolidated Dispatch Center. If a study session is appropriate, I urge you to schedule it on or before the next council meeting. I am prepared to have that session at your request as early as the following day. We conducted a study session in the summer of 2020 in which a presentation illustrated the operational need and the financial benefit of consolidation with Dearborn United Dispatch. Those needs and benefits have only grown over the last 10 months. Fire Chief Rogan has included in this email and has endorsed and fully supports the approval of this agreement. Thank you for your time, Mark, Mark Myers, Chief of Police." I then resent that because of some email issues with council people on Monday, February 22nd at 1:45 PM. So I think it would be fair to let the citizens know that this was never meant to be voted on, to be approved. It was meant to be bringing up the discussion so we have that transparency so all of our citizens have the opportunity to chime in on this. I think that was missed in this conversation and I think it's very important. I want to have this discussion. I want people to be involved. I also truly believe it is the best and we'll talk about that in the study session if it's approved. But I think they need to know that both the fire, fire and police administration have taken this very seriously, understand the need for them to have their voice, but also to see the data, the statistics, the financials, and the operational need. So once again, I'm repeating that email to all of you. So let's please have this study session, study session, open forum, town hall, whatever you would like to call it, publicize it. But this needs to happen and this wasn't something that was ever taken off the table. The needs that were there to, in 2017 are still the needs in 2021. We've been trying to have this worked out for the last four years. This is the culmination of it. So I hope that explains it briefly. But that was the position of both the police and the fire for putting this on the agenda today. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Myers.
Thank you.
Any other council members discussion?
So, so I, I'm going to be honest with you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I don't even know how to vote on this right now because, I mean, I kind of concur with that. I'd like you to go to a study session. So if we can change the motion or ask Tom, Councilman Wenzel to do that.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman. Any other items of discussion? So I just want to say on my end, I just want to say my little items of discussion on my end. I was now fully aware of combined dispatch. Wasn't aware of the logistics and how it works in, in the whole nine yards. But I just want to clarify for some of the residents, some of the things I was able to find through combined dispatch. Number one, I've had residents contact me and think that this will basically mean like if we combine with Dearborn, that basically Dearborn's police department would be pretty much policing our area. I just want to clarify that that would not be the case. It would still be our own men and women in blue protecting us. The second thing I want to mention is I took a trip and I highly recommend, you know, all the council members take these types of trips for actual visual tour of our own dispatch, which, you know, the ladies and gentlemen that are doing the work there are doing, you know, the best they can under the circumstances. But our IT and our technologies definitely just even visually looking at it, you could tell it's dated and when I've asked the experts in that particular field, be it our police department or IT and whatever, they've said it's, it's way outdated as compared to some of the things that are in the Dearborn Dispatch. In addition to that, I have taken three tours of the Dearborn Dispatch and, and I got to tell you again, that is not my field of expertise. I rely on police chiefs, whether it was Police Chief Hadad from Dearborn or Police Chief Mark Myers and previous to that, Val Torni and now I'm blanking on the third chief that I went with.
Petrie.
Petrie. Apologize for that, forgot his name. But I took a tour of that three different times and they showed me their different technology, including, one of the concerns a lot of residents had is if, if somebody calls and the person handling dispatch doesn't know the particular area, are they able to be able to handle that call if they know the vibe of the particular neighborhood? And the reality is they don't have to. And they gave me an example. They said, go ahead, go on your cell phone, walk around and just call from anywhere inside the dispatch. And I did and it was instantly, and I, and I called and I was not supposed to give them an address or anything like that, but you can see right on the screen, it's instantly pointing where I'm at as I'm moving, et cetera, et cetera. So the technology is a lot more advanced than, than some of us, myself included, knew. And lastly, I want to say I went to the combined dispatch from McComb County and took a tour of that particular operation. And again, very impressive. So all I want to say, do I say that my vote, the yes or no? I don't know just yet, but I can tell you this, I'm a lot more open-minded about it, about, as with any items, about listening. Let's listen to all the facts and figures and information and then decide which direction we should go. But from what I'm understanding from most people involved in this, that's the direction that the state is pushing to have a lot more consolidated operations in the state to be able to get some of the revenue. And maybe Chief Myers can chime in on that a little bit more than myself. He's more familiar with it, if you don't mind. But all I'm asking the residents to do is be open-minded, listen to the facts about this and then we could all make a decision on your behalf and know this, each and every one of us will do the best they can to, to make a decision that's in the, that's in the best interest of the residents. Thank you. Chief Myers, want to just give us a little bit of an update on that as far as how that works, as far as what the state wanted, as far as consolidation and up north consolidation that me and you were talking about.
I mean, I can do it. I would love to do it at a study session and bring actually in.
I'd like just a quick minute too, if you don't mind.
The, I'm sorry?
Just a brief abbreviation.
Well, the Executive Director of Conference of Western Wayne will come in at a study session if we have one and speak on some of the state legislature and mandates that we have to do. Briefly speaking, right now, we know that the PFN system, which I'm going to, it's going to be talking way out of my head if I try to tell you what a PFN is for a 911. But it's a mandatory equipment upgrade of $250,000 that has to be done by September period. We've tried to get it budgeted. It's been taken out of the budget, I believe, the last two years. Last year for sure. It is not there. It has to be done. These are costs that are mandated because when we agree to be a public safety access point or a PSAP, we agree to modernize as technology modernizes and any type of the mandates that come across from the state, federal, or local jurisdictions to be in compliance. As for requirements, there was a push a few years back that they were going to tie money to consolidation. That has not happened yet. Will it happen? That would be a great question for the Executive Director of Conference of Western Wayne because they follow the legislation on what goes on with 911 centers. Finally, this isn't unique consolidated dispatch. The entire UP is on two systems for the entire UP. Not everybody knows every street there. Many counties, Kent County, McComb County, all the jurisdictions within those counties all work on one. Those dispatchers that work in those centers do not know every street. It's called computer-aided dispatch because the computer allows you to know where those officers need to go based on GIS, based on locations that are given by the people that are needing assistance. We can go into the technical aspects, but what I can tell you is from my end, and I think Chief Rogan's going to chime in, we're not taking this lightly. We want to have the discussion, but we also, as leaders in these agencies, understand where 911 dispatch is going, the capabilities that we're allowed to and can afford to do as a sole jurisdiction and the benefits of, of a multi-jurisdictional operation. And uh, can afford to do as a sole jurisdiction and the benefits of, of a multi-jurisdictional uh, operation. So I'll let Chief Brogan chime in, but um, I believe it's a miscarriage if we don't have this study session. Because it's an uninformed decision at that point.
Thank you, Chief Myers. Chief Brogan, please go ahead.
Yeah, uh, thank, thank you, Councilman. I, I just wanted to say that there um. We all had concerns about, about any kind of merger like this. It is, it is kind of a. Uh, a nerve wracking to think of taking that step, but we aren't the first ones that have gone through it. Now, we've seen it throughout the state. Um, I, I've spoken with the fire chiefs from all the communities that are involved in, in the uh, dispatch centers now. And they've been very pleased with the service that they've gotten. Uh, any concerns that they've had have been taken very seriously. And I could tell you that Chief Myers and myself would not accept subpar service from, from dispatch. So that's not something that would be okay. Um, what, what we're doing right now just isn't uh, sustainable. We really need to. Take a, a very good look at this and, and make sure that we're doing the best thing for our citizens, the best thing for our firefighters and police officers. And, and it certainly needs to have open mind like uh, like we were talking about to, to take a look at all of the facts. And make an informed decision on what is the best thing for all of the citizens, for the safety of everyone. We're talking about the safety. I've dedicated my entire career to the safety of the citizens of Dearborn Heights. I'm not gonna have a subpar dispatch center uh, take, taking care of us. We're gonna make sure that this is done properly. And our only motivation is, is good service. That's what, that's what this is truly about.
Thank you, Fire Chief Dave Brogan. And I, I just want to add just a quick comment. Um, one of the reasons personally I believe would be, it would be a great idea to have a study session on this. Um, A to bring us all up to date with what the latest technology is and, and, and what direction uh, different cities have gone. But in addition to that, the dynamics of the city has changed. Uh, you know, God, uh, rest his soul, uh, Mayor Pletko. Um, has passed on and we have a new mayor, uh, Mayor Bazey. So you know, for me personally, I tell you, I'd want to know where the mayor stands on this. I'd like to know what new things have come up. And also we have obviously some new council members. I, I think a study session in my opinion would, would be a good idea. But also in addition to that, eh, this has given the residents enough exposure to this to know that this is out there and we're gonna be voting on it. And then we could get more input from residents and the residents could come into those study sessions. Or maybe public forum, public hearing and then be able to state their questions and concerns to the experts in that particular field. Um, was there any other comments from any council members?
Council Chair. If we do go to a public hearing or study session. Uh, I, I, I believe they're two different type things. And uh, I, I would like to get this done as soon as possible, as early as next Tuesday. Uh, we don't have a council meeting then. And um, uh, we need to publicize it. Uh, just a few weeks ago, we were getting almost two hundred people in our, i- i- in, in these, these Zoom meetings, okay? We need to have two, three hundred people come to this. People need to know what it, what it, what it really is. Uh, Chief Myers brought up some great points, okay? Uh, I think every one of us has brought up a good point about this. This is big. This is really big, folks. A- and uh, uh, I don't want to be just the person that's responsible for making it go or not go. And, and people need to voice their opinion and know exactly what they're getting into uh, e- e- either way. So that's what I would like to see is this go to a public hearing like Mr. Myers told us in his. Uh, email, okay? Uh, you know, he was upfront and very transparent about it, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Councilman.
Uh, I would ask uh, Councilman Tom Wenzel if he would like, you know, to amend his motion. Uh, to go to study session or public hearing and I will support that.
Well, I'm not gonna change my motion. Uh, we should vote on this yes or no right now. If you feel you should, if this should pass, vote yes. If you don't, then no, and then if it's voted no, it could always be brought up again. And we could do this, uh, but there's a motion on the table right now. It's been seconded.
Councilman, I, I just want to clarify. So just, just so that the council people make the right vote. Cause I know we've had these types of situations where it becomes confusing if you vote yes, is it a no, et cetera, et cetera. So your motion, Councilman, was to turn this down. So i- isn't that correct?
Yes. That my motion is to vote on it.
Yes.
Okay, to just vote on it. Okay. So that's, that's your motion. Okay. And it was seconded by.
Yes, Zohair Abdallah, that's correct.
Always be brought up in the future in the right way, you know, if they want to set up the town hall meeting, we don't mind anything. Uh, we're on everything transparent. Uh, right now, uh, you know, uh, obviously it's not, the residents aren't aware of everything that's going on. So let's vote, vote on this yes. If you want to go ahead with this, vote yes. If you want to vote no and have these, and have some sessions later, that, that's fine.
So to clarify for some of the council members, if you voted, and I just want to make sure I'm clarifying so that we vote the right way. If you vote yes on this, then that would be basically approving this and we would have, uh, we'd go in a direction and go in towards a combined dispatch, okay? If we vote no on this, it would be turned down, but that does not preclude us or stop us from having a study session. And even possibly brought forward the next council meeting. Is that correct, uh, Madam Clerk?
That's what I, yes.
Okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Corporation, hold on, Corporation Council wants to say something.
Go ahead, Gary.
Or maybe he might have to amend the motion.
Yes, I think that you would have to because right now.
I was thinking about that.
Is, is simply to take a vote and then you would have to go to what your vote would be. Uh, it, it should not be.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
In other words, you have to do two, two votes uh, with regard to this, at this, at this point for it to make sense. Otherwise, you know, voting no means we're not, vote. It doesn't mean that we're rejecting the proposal.
And Gary, can I ask Gary? Gary, can we vote yes or no on it? Then bring it at the end of the meeting by a motion to go to study session?
Uh, well, you're probably sure, no, right now. Um, my recommendation would be to have a vote whether or not to table this or refer the matter to a study. And if it's no, then you would end up then being able to deal with. Uh, Wenzel's motion. That, that would be a, uh, the best way to approach this. Cause right now, I'm not sure if I know what you're voting on and.
I, I don't. I'm confused. I need clear cut motion. So I know if I'm voting yes or no, what I'm voting for.
I agree. So uh, Councilman Zohair, thank you. So uh, Councilman Tom Wenzel, what I'm gonna, the way I'm gonna do this. And I just want to make sure we're all on the same page, please. So I'm gonna ask you. Councilman Tom Wenzel, if you could bear with us here and repeat your motion again. Then I'm gonna have our uh, Counselor Gary Miyatki, our attorney Gary Miyatki. Make sure this motion was made properly and then I'm gonna have our Madam Clerk just a hundred percent verify that we are correct. And then you can clarify what we are specifically voting on, yes or no, on so that everybody's, is clear on this. Is that, is that okay by everyone?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I simply made a motion on item nine J. To vote on Chief Myers' request for approval for police and fire dispatch service agreement.
Okay, and that motion was made by, by Councilman Tom Wenzel, seconded by Councilman Zohair Abdallah. At this particular point, uh, Council Gary Miyatki, based on that motion, is that all okay?
Um, I'm still confused by what of yes or no vote would mean on the motion. I'm, I'm sorry.
It's right there in item nine J. We're just voting on it.
Can I, can I ask?
And you just read the motion.
Are you, are you, are you um, motioning to approve the agreement? I guess that's would be the question.
Right.
That's the confusion here. I'm sorry. And that's my confusion too.
Oh, Council, Councilman Tom Wenzel, so that we could all be a hundred percent clear, if you don't mind, if you could do me a favor. Uh, if you could go to nine J under the recommended motion written by our favorite Dana Flaman.
You know what? I don't have that one. Someone else could read that, please.
You mind if I read it on your behalf and then?
Yes, go ahead.
We'll still make it your motion.
Okay.
So, uh, motion by Councilman Tom Wenzel, and I'm reading it on his behalf only. That the Dearborn Heights City Council approved the agreement for police and fire dispatch services between the city of Dearborn and the city of Dearborn Heights. In addition, authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the city as outlined in item, in, as outlined in item nine J. And supported by Councilman Zohair Abdallah, is that correct?
That's correct.
On behalf of Councilman Tom Wenzel, Councilman Tom Wenzel, was that what you wanted in a motion?
Yes.
Great. Now, uh, Attorney Gary Miyatki, is, is that okay?
Yes, a vote yes would end up approving the agreement. A vote no would not approve the agreement.
And, and Madam Clerk, is this all okay?
Well, I just want to make sure if they, uh, hmm, they're voting to approve it. So does that mean that if it's not approved, that the deal is done?
No.
Or can they still go forward with, if, with the study session?
My recommendation would be, okay, my recommendation would be that there would be a second motion that would be made. It would be an incidental motion. It would still be relevant and they could motion at that time to uh. To refer the matter to a, a, a study session if they so chose.
I just didn't want to make sure that it was just done. Okay, thank you.
And uh, our attorney Gary Miyatki, just for clarification purposes, so all council members are on the same page. That's second motion to refer to a study session for in that direction. That could be by anyone. Is that correct? Any council member, is that correct? Doesn't that have to be council members, correct?
That could be made by anyone, any council, yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So now we're gonna vote on a motion made by Councilman Tom Wenzel, okay? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, so motion is defeated.
Council Chair, Council Pro Tem.
Councilman Ray Muscat.
I move City Council, uh, move item nine J to a public hearing. Uh, so that the residents can uh, have a good understanding of this contract. With the city of Dearborn in uh, red, uh, in, for the nine one one. Uh, uh, move, move to Dearborn.
Support. Uh, co- uh, motion made by Councilman Ray Muscat, supported by, I believe that was uh, Moby Dune, Councilman Moby Dune, is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, our Madam Clerk, you had a question?
I do, and maybe Corporation Council can um, um, help me out on this one. Um, if it's a public hearing, there's more of a process and I, it, it sounds like this wants to be done quicker. Um, so a study session you can set up next week. Public hearing, you have to post that. If I recall correctly, and that would take a longer period of time. And I don't know what constraints it is, but I want you all to be aware that there are two separate uh, types of meetings.
Correct. So which one, Councilman Ray Muscat, which one?
I like for a public hearing. I, I, it, it, it needs a public hearing.
Okay.
Yep.
Public. So it can be publicized in the newspapers everywhere.
Okay, fine. I just wanted to make sure that it, there, it would take longer to do a public hearing. You would not be able to do that next Tuesday.
So man, man. I don't know that, but.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman Ray Muscat.
It, it, it doesn't matter what day we have. It may be able to be Tuesday, it may not. But be able to look that up and if it happens to be Wednesday, Thursday or Friday, so be it. Okay, but we, we gotta get an answer to this. We've gotta help uh, uh, Chief Myers on this. He's worked hard on this. Regardless of which way we go with it, okay? That's how I want to do it of, uh, uh, you know, and it doesn't matter if Dearborn can't wait. That, that's.
Okay.
They've waited this long, they can wait a little bit.
Amen, amen.
No different than a salesman coming to your house saying, well, if you buy it.
Hey, 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 hey.
Yeah, we just wanted you, I wanted you to be aware of what the difference was and that there would be a little bit of lengthier time.
I don't, I don't think they're gonna turn down nine hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, can you give us a, so that we could all vote on this the proper way? Cause I know he's, uh, Councilman Ray Muscat has asked for a public hearing. So just for clarification purposes, I know you had some concerns. Uh, ju- and that doesn't mean yes or no. I'm just saying roughly, how much time does it take for a public hearing to be able to take place? If we follow all the protocol, protocols and logistics?
I don't know it word by word. It's in, it's in the charter, I believe, but it, I also believe it has to be published in the paper. Um, so that would take time. It depends on when.
Are we talking about roughly two weeks? Are we talking about? Trying to get a little bit of an idea.
I, I just know that time is in, on when you get that public hearing into the paper. Go ahead, Corporation Council.
Okay.
It, it doesn't have to go in a newspaper, according to what we passed years ago, that electronically is just as good as a newspaper.
Correct.
That is correct.
We, we, we change that, so.
Okay, I just know that C D B G still publishes theirs and you are right, you are right.
It'd be nice to do that.
George.
Can you let, can you let Dana in? She's trying to comment on this. Motion in two weeks, is that correct? Okay, doesn't matter. All right.
Waving her hands.
All right. Uh, Council Gary Miyatki, do you have, can you give us a little, send a little bit in regards to public hearings?
Well, i- i- indeed, we did amend our charter provision to allow these things to be done electronically. Uh, however, if you want to have the notice in the paper, which you can do a notice in the paper. Even if it's gonna end up being sufficient to do it electronically, that would end up taking more time. That's why I held up like four fingers. Because my understanding is that there is some delay if you're going to do it in the local paper as well. Um, so I mean, either way, you're compliant. The real issue is how do you want it to end up being done by the clerk's office?
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Miyatki, you're saying it's roughly about three to four weeks, is that correct?
If we use the paper, if we do it just online, it would be relatively quick.
Okay, and I'd like to uh, add a little bit of a discussion. I'd like John Zidiki, and I know he's done some social media stuff on behalf of our city. Uh, and let's face it, social media is the way a lot of people communicate nowadays. So I'd like, obviously with the mayor's, okay, have him maybe work on something to give this little exposure. So that our residents can give our, their input to their council members so that we can make a, a, a better vote. That's on behalf of the residents and in direction of residents and all of our administration would like us to go in. Was there any other uh, questions, discussions or concerns from the council members?
Council, uh, Council Chair Pro Tem?
Yes, Councilman Robert Mount.
Yeah, I, I think uh, I, I echo Councilman Muscat's uh, strong. Uh, desire to have a public meeting, but I think if we have a study session open to the public. A public hearing is for certain matters, um, like uh, uh, the need for. C D B G money, uh, or a particular grant or something. I think what we're talking about is a, a study session where we hear the facts, but it's open to the public. And maybe not immediately this Tuesday, so it can be advertised. These days, as we all know, spending the money to post something in the paper. Uh, uh, may be sort of a waste of money to, to get it out on social media. But tha- tha- that's all I have to say. I think what we want to hear is from the police chief, from the fire chief, and then from the public. On, on what people's questions are.
Thank you, Councilman Robert Constant. My concern was also is because it's a new item for some of the council members. It is a new item. Uh, of course, our mayor was on the council back then, but as a mayor right now, obviously he's got a little bit of a different perspective on this. Or could have a different perspective on this. So if that being the case, if we delayed two weeks, worst case, three weeks, I don't think it's the end of the world. It'll also give an opportunity for some of our residents to do their own research and calls and, and, and concerns to their council members. So that the right vote can be taken on behalf of everyone. Was there any other discussion items on this?
I, I canceled.
Go ahead, Madam.
I think from what I'm hearing from all, from all of you is that whatever you call it, a public hearing or a study session. That we want to inform our residents of what's going on and have it presented by both of the chiefs. Uh, uh, and, and hear everybody's input, whether or not it's a public hearing or it's a study session or it's a town hall meeting or whatever. You just want to get the information out to the people and have their input as well.
Okay.
Exactly.
So Madam Clerk, then with that being the case, then our Councilman Ray Muscat would have to amend his motion to be. Uh, either a, a public uh, hearing or a study session. Public hearing. Or did you say public hearing or study session, Ray?
No, I said public hearing because it does make a difference.
Okay, so is your motion public hearing?
Public hearing is different than a study session and, and you're talking about a million dollars a year here. We're not talking about chunk change.
Okay, so his, so Councilman, uh just to repeat your motion, let me know if if there's anything incorrect. Your motion is to put item nine J to a study session, I'm sorry, to a public hearing. Advertise it in the local paper, correct, and on our website? And uh do this as soon as it possibly logistically can be done, is that correct, Councilman?
It doesn't have to go in the newspaper. Okay, does not have to be the newspaper, but it's gotta be made public, we can even put it on the on the uh city channel. Okay, so that's my, tha- that's how we want to do it, a public hearing, and however we do it, legally, that's what we do.
All in any other discussions?
Yeah, you know what we could do is uh hopefully, hopefully, one of the newspapers write a write a story about this and it'll be advertising the newspaper for free.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Tom, and that's a good idea, although it won't be an official announcement, so that has to be official. Okay, so all in favor of Councilman Ray Muscat's motion, please state aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is ordinances and resolutions, and we have on item number eleven, bear with me here to go my notes. Uh I'm sorry, eleven A, I'm sorry. Chair Pro Tem ordinances and resolutions, Councilman Ray Muscat, Councilman Abdul Haq, and Councilman Tom Wenzel. Have a resolution for a new mayor appointee position.
Uh I move that the city of Dearborn Heights approve the resolution for new mayor appointee position and create the posi- position of Director of Grants and Budget Compliance, uh DGBC. And authorize the mayor to fill this position. In addition, authorize the city comptroller to fund the DGBC position for the mayor's office budget for for year twenty twenty, account number one oh one dash one seven one dash seven two six point zero zero zero. And submit to council potential budget amendments as needed, as outlined in eleven A.
Okay, motion by Councilman Ray Muscat, seconded by Councilman Zohair Abdul Haq, is there any discussion? Councilman Robert Constant.
Thank you, Council Chair Pro Tem, I think what um number one, I'd like to hear, you know, what our new mayor thinks about creating this new position, and then number two, I and I discussed this briefly with Councilman Muscat, typically what happens is so if the fire department wants a uh some grant money. The chief, maybe with the help of some people in the department. Knowing all the background, knowing the specifics, the the details, the numbers, rights for the grant. And then same thing with if it's the building department, or if it's the ordinance department. And that's the problem with having one uh separate position. So this matter also might need to be moved to a study session, but again, I'd I'd like to hear what our you know, new mayor's viewpoint is uh uh on the subject and possibly our fire chief who's got somebody in his department that's been successful on grant writing.
Alright, um Councilman Ray Muscat, do you mind if we go to the mayor first?
You know, for for six years, I've been wanting something like this. You know, we as a council have had last minute things. We've been giving, we've been given things that we have to vote on on good faith. I've said it many times, I don't have a staff of people to work for me. I don't know the ins and the outs, and nobody knows all the ins and outs when someone gives you a budget. You're thinking that the budget is completely fine. We just had a study session earlier where taxpayers were overtaxed six point eight million dollars. Nobody ever even knew it, okay? No one knew it. We've had a lot of things come before city council, and we did not know, and we we pass things in good faith. We also passed a contract with TPOM that we thought was a good contract till it came back, because it wasn't a good contract, okay? So, you know, i- it's, it it only helps us to make sure that everything is right uh uh on everything, and uh other cities have things like this, this is where it came from. This is not something that's gonna be new or new to the city, or it might be new to our city, but it's not new anywhere, it it's it's like that everywhere, okay? And uh uh I I like I said, I don't want to take anything in good faith anymore. We purchased a vehicle for our former mayor, car was supposed to go to the police department. Okay, supposed to go to the doggone police department, and it went somewhere else. I'm tired of getting duped. I don't want to be duped no more, and I don't care who the mayor is, he could be my friend, he could be my enemy, I don't want it anymore. So this is the reasoning behind all this.
Thank you, Councilman Ray Muscat. Mayor, uh Mr. Mayor was next, Councilman, if you don't mind, uh Mayor Bazey. Uh Councilman uh Robert Constant asked for your input on this, if you don't mind, please.
Thank, thank you, Council Chair Pro Tem Abdullah, and also Councilman Constant and Councilman Muscat for your comments. Uh we've actually had some discussion here, you know, when we saw this on the agenda. Uh I had a good discussion with our HR Director, Elizabeth. And also with our city attorney, Mr. Miyaki regarding this topic. Uh I think the best thing to do with this, uh once, once it's passed. We're not gonna make it as a permanent position for right now, because we would have to create an ordinance uh to add it, to add a position. Such as this position. So what was recommended is we actually we can uh we can appoint somebody and not violating the civil service guidelines for six months. And just see what happens, a- again, you know, so we're not creating a new position. We can bring somebody on for six months to do this and to see how they perform. And at the same time, you know, if if, you know, if there's a good performance from, you know, whoever comes in. Then we can look at incorporating an ordinance uh that we can make it a permanent position. So just with this here, that doesn't mean that we're gonna bring somebody full time, you know, working for the city full time, we can bring them in. And with the same as what we did with uh with a deputy uh deputy for the, excuse me, for the Parks and Rec. Just have a six month contract, then you have to go back and uh you know, reapply for the position, or even put it in a in an ordinance format. And I know um Mr. Miyaki, I don't know if he wants to chime in, but that's that's one of the things that we recommend is we can, with the appointment, it'd be only for six months, you know, so not violating any guidelines for the civil service.
Do I need to change my motion then?
Yeah, tha- that'll be a good idea, if we can amend the the motion to make it civil service and I'm I'm sorry, just make it for six months, and we can revisit it based on the performance of the individual. Mr. Miyaki wants to
Council Gary Miyaki.
Uh yes, uh the mayor and I had a very good discussion about what he envisioned with respect to this position. He saw it as uh an idea worth uh exploring. Um but he wanted to make sure that the cost would uh would not outweigh the benefits in the long run. He wanted to see if the position would produce what we're all hoping that it will. And I told him then what we could uh do is to end up uh in compliance with the civil service rules, have it as a temporary appointment. And if it looks like it was working really well, uh then we could end up having an ordinance like we did uh when the ordinance enforcement department was created. And with an ordinance allowing for the creation of new department, the director of that department would then be an appointee of the mayor as a department head. And uh that would be fully compliant with the charter, and I thought it was a very uh a very reasonable approach, and I agree with it.
Yes, go ahead, uh Councilman.
I'd like to amend my motion then. That the city of Dearborn Heights approve the resolution for a new mayor appointee position uh for six months. Uh to a position of Director of Grants and Budget Compliance, DGBC. And authorize the mayor to fill that position temporarily. In addition, authorize the city comptroller to fund the DGBC position from the mayor's office budgets for year twenty twenty, account number one oh one dash one seven one dash seven two six point zero zero zero, and submit to council potential budget amendment as needed, as outlined in eleven A.
Support.
Mr. Chair?
So motion made by Councilman Ray Muscat, supported by Councilman Tom Constant. And I believe, is that you, Councilman Moby Dune?
Yes, thank you. I think this is something, uh as a grant writer, I think it's important, it's imperative to have in the city of Dearborn Heights. But as I look at this resolution that was put forward by our our honorable counsel, Tom Wenzel, Zohair Abdul and Ray Muscat, as I look at this, I want to know if we're going to approve on this today, does that mean that you know, before the the mayor can appoint somebody, they have to have five years of working experience as a director for the department head? I mean, that's gonna, you know, really limit uh to who we can really find to this position, I mean, I don't know. I can't count on my hands uh on on two fingers, how many people held a five year position as a uh as a director, I mean, you know, we could potentially have somebody coming in from Lansing that was once uh you know, who's a resident here in the city of Dearborn Heights, who worked in Lansing, is moving here, you know, wants to work in-house and work for the city of Dearborn Heights, but doesn't have five years of uh department head, so I I feel like if we can amend this a little bit more, not having uh all these restrictions on who gets can be appointed for this position. Because I think this grant writer is much needed, and say that we, you know, appoint somebody, we find somebody for this. But then it makes it a lot harder down the line to find somebody to fill this uh position.
I think you'd be surprised at how many people do have that.
Sorry, I I don't know how many people are der- a director for the permanent for five years, uh with with all due respect. I'm not saying to not have that. You know, I want to be able to look at, you know, a a bunch of different options that are gonna be brought forward to from the mayor to say, okay, perfect. I mean, at the end of the day, the mayor's gonna make that decision, and the council's gonna approve it.
Uh I don't think I want to amend my motion anymore. I think what we have is something that we can do for six months. It's only for six months, and if you want to change it after that, we can change it.
Then what I'm asking, maybe Gary.
Well, let's uh Councilman, let's uh go ahead, Councilman, finish yourself.
Maybe uh you know, you know, our council, a corporate council can answer this. If we go to this today, is this gonna be the precedent that's gonna follow through? For as long as, you know, the Dearborn, the city of Dearborn Heights is around.
Council Pro Tem?
Okay, so I'm gonna go to Councilman Zohair Abdul Haq, and then after that.
Okay, I think we can resolve, we can resolve this very easily. Whereas the appointee must preferably have five years, we just add the word preferably.
I can agree to that.
Thank you.
Gary Miy- our attorney Gary Miyaki, uh Councilman Moby Dune asked you a question, if you might answer that?
Yeah, uh if Councilman Baydun, could you repeat that, because some of it did not come through clearly?
And I just want to understand the legality of this. If you're looking at this, and one of the things in the resolution that was brought forward is, where's the appointment of, so they must hold for, it says where the appointment must have five years of working experience as a director of the permanent with similar Michigan municipalities. So I I understand this, uh asking is, okay, fine, we find somebody. But then this person works for a few years, and then they're no longer working with us, and it's hard for us to find somebody that has that type of experience, and we're no longer able to fill that seat anymore, because it's hard to find somebody that has that experience.
Councilman, if I may? That Councilman Abdul Haq's uh recommendation, as agreed to by Councilman Muscat alleviates that problem with the word preferably being added into the resolution. And uh I think the rest of it would be a practical matter for the administration to try to find someone. And if the administration is not able to do so, uh then uh they would not it it would not have to do so, namely, the mayor would not have to do so. So I think the fix that's been suggested by Councilman Abdul Haq addresses the matter adequately.
Go ahead, uh Councilman Tom Wenzel.
Yeah, as a a co-writer on this, um I I agree with that that verbiage change. And as everyone knows that that's been watching the meetings, I've been a a proponent uh of a grant writer for a long time, and this is something we really need. And possibly, maybe, I don't know about the legality, but maybe the a par- a portion of the the salary for this person could be taken uh out of a small percentage of the grants received, I don't know if that's legal or not, so we might be able to, you know, not cost us as much money as we think it would cost us.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh as far as I'm concerned, myself, personally, I've always been in favor of hiring a grant wa- writer for our city. They could definitely bring in a lot more money than what who pay for a grant writer, so on that, and I'm okay. I did have some concerns in regards to this resolution. One of them was, and maybe you guys can discuss them one at a time eventually, but uh today. Uh one of them was a salary of seventy six thousand dollars, I'm not sure where we came up with that amount, seventy six thousand dollars. On the high end, unless that is the going rate for grant writers, that was one concern that I did have. The uh tracking the city's budgetary transactions. We already have someone in place that does that, and that's uh at this particular point, Plant Moran. We also talked, if you guys recall, at one point, a proposal that I had, which is bring Plant Moran in every sixty days to check what things that they have recommended and audited, to make sure that those are being done. And and to me, I would want to see some sort of study, like which way is a better way to go, as far as whether uh uh how much the cost would be. And which one would be a more efficient way to do this, that was another concern I had, and the next concern that I had is the restrictions that we had as far as the type of person that would be picked, and I know you have on there you have changed it, uh Councilman Zohair Abdul Haq, say preferably, which is definitely a a preferred way that I prefer, so I like that a little better. But then we do have on there that they have to have a master's degree from a US accredited uh higher education institution. Uh and a bachelor's degree in accounting, and I'm just wondering, with these types of criteria. The salary and everything else involved, and the fact that it's gonna be right now a hundred and eighty day hiring. A, if you have somebody with that type of criteria, B, if somebody would want to be hired for just a hundred and eighty days. And C, is that exact criteria absolutely mandatory, or can somebody, and I've thrown it out there, like like, just hypothetically. A former mayor of another city, maybe that has an accounting background, that maybe doesn't have a master's degree, which we said right now would be preferable. But I'm giving you as an example, or or doesn't have a master's degree, I should say.
We can use preferably for that too.
Yes, me personally, I'm just giving my two cents worth. I think a grant writer, absolutely, the rest, I think what I'd like to do, at least, even if it's a half hour study session on this to to hone it down a little bit more clear, in my opinion.
I think we can vote on it as is with preferably for both those items.
Yeah, I think some discussion would be good.
Mr. Chair?
Okay, Councilman Moby Dune.
So so I don't, I don't mind uh even voting on this, I think this is something like, you know, if the mayor said, this is a hundred and eighty days, I mean I'm sure, you know, we can, you know, some people are gonna apply for this, I I I mean, I actually, my another other question would be, is this going to be published? Is the mayor gonna publish this, positions are open so that people know? And so, I mean, at that point, I mean, I think this is something, and you know, listen, I think the grant writer is something that we've always needed in the city. I know even speaking with one of my good friends, David Kenezic, and his thing was, we always needed a grant writer in the city, and we don't have one. But I also like what Councilman Abdul, uh I'm sorry, Councilman Abdullah's side is where we can also bring in Plant Moran, which would also ultimately save us some money. But but, you know, I think the grant writer, just having one in the city is, it's it's needed. Uh but I like that you were able to change and put preferable on both of those, so that in case, who knows, one day, a city council or from another, who understands this very well, can come in. We're not now limited to who we can bring into the city, with, based on their experience.
Councilman Ray Muscat.
You know, let let's be clear with this, you know, this is giving the the mayor an option to do this or not to do this. This is gonna give him the opportunity, if he wants to hire someone, or not hire someone. I never put it in there that he must or shall hire someone, just giving him the opportunity.
Muscat, who does that person, uh first of all, I'd like to make sure that we interview enough people. Uh, first of all, I'd like to make sure that we interview enough people. I, I. Uh, to make sure we're getting the best of the best.
That's why you, that's why you advertise it.
Sure. So who does that person answer to?
Or do they answer to us? Or do they? Going to be there. It, it's going to be a combination of the mayor and us. Okay, um.
It's so. Are they going to be, so the grant writing is pretty clear, obviously. They do grant writing. That, let's put that aside. That one, I think, if I'm not mistaken, we're not taking this to vote, but I don't think any of the council members have any argument on that one. Is, is, is that correct? I know it's not a vote, but none of the council members, at least from the five, have had a problem with that. But on the other one, who does that person answer to? Are they on behalf of the mayor and then? Put us in checks and balances or are they for us to put the mayor's administration checks?
Well, I think it's a combination of both.
Between, it, it seems kind of a conflict, I don't say conflict of interest, but. Uh, you know, check, check, checks and balances against.
I think it's a combination of both.
Uh, yeah. I mean.
Uh, Mister Mayor. I mean, basically, just like everybody else in the city, every employee in the city, they have to work in the best interest of the city. And what, whatever is best interest of the city, this is the person that will bring, when we bring somebody forward has to be. He has to do what's best for our city and what's best to move our city forward. And again, you know, with, with this here, what we can do is, you know, six months. You know, we can evaluate it after, you know, before the six months is over to see if the, the person's performing. And, you know, we can revisit it, you know, at, at that, at that time. And, uh, we, uh, I mean, that's, that's why Mr. Miyaki and myself, we spoke about this with, you know, and had side conversation with Elizabeth. You know, just to make it six months. So we're not obligated to keep somebody full-time, you know, after the six months.
And Mister Mayor, the final person that will be selected would be at your discretion?
Yes.
Or is that, okay. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Council Chair Pro Tem.
Welcome. Any other items for discussion on this item? Councilman Robert Constant, and I'm going to take no more than one or two more because we do have to wrap this.
Uh, Council Chair Pro Tem, Haj Dev Abdullah. The only point, your point regarding the, uh, budget position. We start with Plant Moran because they have all the data, they have. All the numbers in their computer, the past budgets and so forth. So I would just suggest that's the place to start. And I think your idea of paying, uh, uh, for example, Plant Moran. Uh, something additional at their, whatever the rate is to.
They, they did send us something already on that.
Yeah, and I, I, I saw it and read it that if we are having a problem with. You know, this particular department or with A, B, and C, the handling of cash, the, the paying of, uh, uh, debts by wire transfer. That we have them suggest, uh, controls and. And, uh, wait us to correct it first together with the department before we. We create a, you know, a, another position and it would be really hard to hire somebody. For six months, I would think more of, you know, somebody who's, uh. Maybe just finished college and just starting out or, uh, some of our existing personnel, like, uh, for example, our new. Uh, person in the mayor's office, but, uh, uh, I think we've had a good discussion and we can move forward on this.
Thank you, Councilman Constant. Any other final? One more question, if there is one. If there isn't, we're going to go ahead and take this to a vote.
I just want to ask.
Okay, quickly, Councilman Mo, and then we're going to go with Councilman Zohair Abulhak and that will wrap it up and we'll make.
This hire is based on the mayor's appointment, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilman, uh, Zohair Abulhak, go ahead.
The plant Moran, we have experience with them for fifteen years. We have six point eight million dollars overcharged to the residents. Let's try something new, some, something fresh. And the mayor has the full discretion to pick the best person for this job. In six months, if this person doesn't do or perform what was agreed on. It is the mayor, you know, uh, discretion to just let him go. So let's find the best person for this job by letting it go. Public so people can apply and he, I'm sure he will pick the best one for our city.
Hmm, okay, thank you, Councilman. So I'm going to go ahead and, uh, put this to a vote. All those in favor of item number eleven A, uh, please state I.
I.
I. I. Those opposed? So I'll take a roll call on this, just to make sure we got the right votes. Uh, I voted I, yes, uh, Councilman Zohair Abulhak.
Yes.
Councilman Mobidun.
Yes.
Councilman Constant.
Yes.
Councilman Muscat.
Yes.
Councilman Wansel.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes with the amendment of the words preferably.
That was in the resolution, correct? And then as far as in the motion, it was temporarily.
Correct.
For, for a hundred, for a hundred and eighty days.
Hundred and eighty days, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item, we have new business. This is for a business renewal license for Warren Valley Golf Course. Located at two six one one six West Warren Avenue.
Let's see if we can do. Chair, uh, David Bell.
Uh, Councilman Robert Constant.
I move that, uh, the Dearborn Heights City Council renew the business license. For Warren Valley Golf Course, uh, at two six one one six West Warren, as outlined in thirteen A.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Robert Constant, supported by Councilman Mobidun. Any questions? All those in favor, state I.
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 Any opposed? And I'm an I. Any opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda. We have, um. Communication from any, um, directors, is that correct, uh? Madam Clerk.
Council members. From council members.
Council members.
Comments from council members.
Members.
Council Pro Town.
Town. Come and hand up.
Councilman Ray Muscat. Um, I'm just going to second.
Okay.
Go ahead, uh, Ray, Councilman Ray Muscat.
I got a couple, couple of things. Um, one is, um, for, I guess, Director Salmy. Uh, Cherry Hill between, uh, Beach Daily and Inkster. Uh, I believe that stretch of road belongs to us if I'm not mistaken. Um, when can we work with Inkster on getting that thing repaired? It, it's. I mean, we've got even the sewers are starting, the, the drains, the storm drains are collapsing on our side of the street. And, uh, this doesn't make sense repairing those and as the road collapses, they'll collapse again. Uh, so that's one. Could I hear from Mister Salmy if he's still here? I'm sorry, I didn't call you on it.
I'm here, you hear me?
Yes.
So if, in, in the upcoming, uh. Road and highway budget, we can look at that cost, get some costs, uh. Some cost estimates, um, what it would cost for us to do our half. We can reach out to Inkster, see if they are financially able to. Participate in that project, but I certainly can, uh, investigate that for you.
And I have one more, if you don't mind, Council Pro Town.
Go ahead, Councilman Muscat.
I, I believe this would be for the police. Uh, getting a lot of phone calls from residents, uh, that live near Andover and Gully. They would like to see a four-way stop sign. Um, install there. Is there something that you could do that to look into this? And have, uh, two more stop signs put in?
Yep, though, there's a traffic safety officer that actually that's their title. They'll go out and do the traffic study. They'll measure the amount of cars that pass through there in the day, the number, if there's schools in the area, there's a whole formula that they do. And then they make the recommendation whether or not based on, uh, that traffic study.
You need an email from me on that?
Andover and Gully, you said, correct?
Yes.
For stop signs, yep. I will pass it along to our traffic safety.
Okay, so you don't need an email from me?
Nope, I do not. I already got it here as.
Uh, okay, I appreciate that. And then, uh, I got to bring up one more thing, uh, Council Pro Town. And I kept a lot of phone calls, uh, from, uh, residents and also from our city treasurer. About the three percent. Uh, of late fees that people were charged because they were under the impression that Monday was a holiday. Um. Uh, I'd like to see if these people can get a three percent. Their three percent back. I mean, historically, we've done it for a day. I, I know I talked with, uh, our treasurer and, uh. She cited, uh, different reasons why we can't. Uh, and if she or, uh, our corporation council can, uh, chime in and tell us. Uh, if we can or cannot.
Okay, um, Attorney Gary Miyaki, please.
Where do you go?
He's muted here. He's muted.
I'm not going to touch it. Go ahead.
All right.
I'm sorry, that was me and George doing it at the same time.
Oh, okay, all right. Um, I believe that there might be some difficulties with. Trying to do something after the fact, after there's been money that has already been received, if that's part of the issue. In other words, if someone failed to come in during the time period that was scheduled. Then came in late and was charged, uh, for that, uh, that period. I know that Treasurer Riley and I. Used to address these issues with people, for example, making a payment. And then wanting to end up getting money back and that cannot end up being done. So I would have to research the issue. Um, and I think that there might be some other difficulties. I know that I had a discussion with. Uh, City Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton, um, with regard to this, uh, this issue. And, uh, I think she has some important things to chime in with, um, on this point.
Council Chair.
Councilman Zohair Abulhak.
Okay, I would suggest. Just to announce during this session to our public. Whoever came on the sixteenth of February. To come back and who paid three percent. To come back with his receipt or her receipt. So they can pre, uh, get refund just for the sixteenth of February, no more, no less. Because the fifteen was a mistake by me and by John. We did the papers and we put the fifteen of February, we didn't know. It was a holiday. But we have a precedence more than once that John Riley came in front of the city council. And asked because of the holiday. To extend it one day. So those people who came on the sixteen and paid. They can come and see if they can recoup that three percent. Nothing after the sixteen, just one day because of the holiday.
Council, Council Chair.
Oh, go ahead, um, uh, Council Gary Miyaki.
Um, again, I would have to research that issue. However, it does take an official vote of the council to waive any sort of penalty. It's required by statute. You could not end up just announcing that in this fashion. Without potentially causing a violation of the law. And that was part of what the city treasurer and I had discussed and I concurred in her feeling and her, her belief and her opinion with regard to that. That it, she is correct on the law.
Thank you, Gary. One of the concerns that I personally got is. You know, quite honestly, setting a precedent on, on something like this. Um. I know it was announced multiple times at the council meetings. I know we had it on the website that we were open and I know at the very minimal, people could have called and asked if they're open. Um, so, so I, I, you know, I, I found it. Find a little challenging to say, okay, on something like this. And then have people come back again and again and again and say, well, I didn't know this, that's why I paid it late. Uh, you know, we do got to keep in mind that they've been due for a multitude of days. It's not like they would do, it's not like we. Sent out the bills on Friday and they would do on that Monday. So people have had ample time to be able to pay or ample time to be able to call and see if we were open. And I know it was announced by the treasurer multiple times that we are open. So personally. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm not in favor, I feel bad, but I'm not honestly in favor because we will set a precedent to continue to give back. Uh, you know, money back to people just based on different circumstances every time. And I think also the logistics of this. It might be a little complicated. I mean, you know, the, the penalties. You know, three percent of what the bill is, is not a huge amount. You know, a, and, and I think the treasurer and our former treasurer Zohair Abulhak can, can, you know.
Councilman, I was, I was a treasurer for a few months, not much. But I have seen lots of residents who came late. And they were forgiven to pay the penalty by the administration on water and on, on other things. This is not the first time. And I'm just asking for the day of the holiday, the fifteen was a holiday. Some people didn't know, some people don't watch the city council. There is eleven hundred in one, eleven hundred and sixteen resident who paid on Friday, Saturday, Sunday and Monday. I don't believe more than fifty to a hundred who paid on the sixteen. And I received quite a few phone calls from people. If it is taken a motion, I will be more than willing to put the motion forward. For that day, only for the sixteens who came and paid on the sixteens.
Okay, any other discussions on this? So for Councilman Ray Muscat, oh, I'm sorry, our treasurer Lisa.
Thank you, if I may, um, just to add in. I mean, I feel very bad that somebody was late and there's a late fee, but that is on the bill that we sent out the first week in December. Everyone was where, um, the date was on the bill as, as, um, Councilman Abdallah mentioned, you had worked and picked that date. Um, City Hall was open, it was well advertised, not just. Not just on the bill, but we had in the newsletter or newspaper, excuse me. Uh, we had it on social media, we had it on the website. I announced it several times. Um, and again, I feel very bad. It is about a handful of folks who. And I'm going to tell you, I looked at the number of transactions. But the thing is, and when I talked to the attorney, I called the attorney immediately, our office followed the letter of the law. The General Property Tax Act, the Act of Two, it's Act two oh six. We followed it to the letter as far as making sure we were doing the right thing. I, as a treasurer, and I had a lot of calls where people were referred and I was told, and you just said the administration waived fees. That violates the law. And I'm, and I was sworn by, uphold the law. And when I ran for office, I swore to enforce and uphold regulations. And so Michigan Capala two one one point four four, section four. Only the council by a resolution can do any waiving of fees, which means no one. Not the treasurer, not the administration should be waiving fees. That is not my call. Uh, and, and I talked to, um, Counselor Miyaki right away. There are several concerns. There's concerns with, uh, potential liabilities and even a resource challenge for your treasurer's office. Um, and again, I'm very sorry, but that date was set, we were open, we advertise it as such. I'm concerned about the liabilities and resources and again, what the impact is on the city. Um, as well as the department and, and believe me, I'm very compassionate for our residents. This is not a reflection of that whatsoever. This is following the regulations. Thank you.
Thank you, treasurer. Any other comments on that particular item before we go to any other comments from council members? Okay, any other couns, any other comments from council members?
This chair.
Councilman Tom Wansel.
Yeah, thank you, um. I have a couple of things, uh, first of all, you know, we've recently had a, uh, a snowfall. It, it wasn't an overwhelming snowfall, but our, our streets were, uh. Salted and plowed promptly, which is a, a nice thing to have. I know, I, I traveled through a lot of other cities and, uh. Few days after the snow, like the roads weren't even touched, so, uh, kudos to our DPW for that. But more importantly, I want to thank all the people that were out there, uh, helping neighbors shovel snow. Uh, in our area here, we have a thing called neighbor labor and, uh, we help the elderly and, uh. Uh, on people that are unable to get out there and shovel the snow. And I, I actually witnessed a lot of kids out there from the high schools shoveling snow for people. Um, it, it was pretty cool to see all the, uh, the people out there helping out in this situation. And, um, one other thing is I wanted to mention is, um, I hope not stealing the mayor's thunder on this, but, uh. Uh, this, this Saturday, um, at the Eaton Senior Center. From, uh, one to three PM, there's going to be a food, uh, distribution. And it's, uh, it's hosted by, uh, Mayor Bill Bozzi. And it's a partnership with the Annapolis High School Key Club. And, uh, it'll be a drive-up food, uh, food distribution. And, um, hope to see everyone there for that. It's, it's, it's about, uh, we haven't had one in a little bit and I know it's, uh, it's a need, it's a very. Very, uh, thing that has to be, uh, met and, uh, congratulations to our. thing that has to be met and congratulations to our mayor for organizing this one and several other ones. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Tom Wensel. Was there any other comments from also members? Councilman Robert Conston.
Thank you, Chair Protem David Abdullah. Yes, hats off to our DPW, we did get our streets plowed. Thank goodness, it wasn't too bad of a snowfall and we haven't had too much snow this year, thank goodness, but I think our DPW did a great job. Just echo what Councilman Wensel said, I shoveled the snow of several residents, including my ninety-five-year-old father's house. He, he was not happy with the job I did, he never is. I've shoveled that snow probably more than anybody else, but yeah, there were a lot of people out helping neighbors and getting rid of the ice and now everything is thawed. Regarding the discussion about the Dearborn Heights joining the Dearborn Area Dispatch, I, I, I think it would be really premature if we just voted it and, and voted it up or down. I think we need to hear from the experts and we need to hear the data and the public does too before we make any decision. Thank you, Chair Protem Dave Abdullah.
Thank you, Robert Conston. I have a quick comment. In my seven, eight years on the city council, usually, as, as you know, with a lot of people in, in, in the, in the world, if there's a problem, there's a first call and complain to everybody about that problem. But when somebody does good, people rarely will compliment somebody. And I go out of my way to do that and my wife kind of gets embarrassed by me when I do that too, whether it's waitresses, doctors, nurses, anybody, I go out of my way to compliment them when they do a good job. Well, in this case, I just want to take my own little piece of it and, and, and totally compliment our DPW. I mean, I, I was getting as a council member, nothing but calls that people say, wow, great job, oh, they did such a great job. So I'd like to compliment our DPW for the great job they did in, in minimizing the complaint calls that we sometimes get. So that was beautiful. And I'd also like to compliment the leadership of our mayor Bazey. You know, I'm sure obviously he obviously helped in coordinating something on that. And it was all good stuff. So the fact that we had, I thought it was pretty, it was a lot of snow. And the job that the DPW did in almost any streets we drove in, I'd try to totally compliment them and thank you guys and gals. Appreciate it.
Council Protem.
Councilman Zohair Abdoh.
I have a couple of questions, one for Mr. Miyaki. I got some phone calls from people complaining about the beggars in our city. I would like to know if there is any ordinance we can write to stop this kind of things or if there is any other means, either, you know, to help these people to go to shelters or to prevent them from stopping on stop signs and harassing people and maybe endangering the public.
Yeah, and interfering with traffic.
Mr. Miyaki. I don't think he heard what I said.
Yeah, he heard it. Oh, no, I, I, I heard, I just unmuted. I had to be unmuted. This is actually a more complex area of law than one might think. Several years ago, I would say within the last five, the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Sixth Circuit upheld the right of people to engage in this kind of panhandling along thoroughfares. And actually, some of this was raised with us as an issue in the state of Michigan also because the Michigan Attorney General at the time had ended up essentially taking the position that we can uphold the law, that you can't go into the thoroughfares. So I would need to actually research this issue to see what we can do given that Sixth Circuit precedent. And if the council wants me to do so, then I'll do so. Or if the mayor wants me to do so, I will look at into that issue.
Mr. Mayor, would you authorize it, please?
Yes, okay. All right, I'll, I'll look into it.
I, I do know, Gary, I've, I've read in some places, I remember seeing articles about this, I can't remember if it was in the Free Press or the news, but they talked about which, I mean, I, I, you know, I was kind of confused on the angle, but they, it's, it's a part of freedom of speech. And I guess I've been able, a lot of cities have not been able to not allow people to do that or to put ordinances in place to, to not allow that because it's considered freedom of speech or not so far. So long as they're not stepping on the road, it's considered freedom of speech.
Basically, go ahead, Mary, Gary.
Yes, that was part of what my understanding was and I remember researching this issue several years back because we had actually been threatened with litigation.
Yep.
Yeah, and, but I want to see what the latest is with respect to the case law before I would give an opinion on that.
Sure.
Okay.
The second, the second question.
Go ahead.
Okay. It is for Gary too. I have to keep you busy tonight. The houses, the cap houses. And there was a house we bought, it's in bad shape. I know the address five, six, six, two, I don't know the street. I just want to know how long it will take before we write the contract to put those houses in properties, couple vacant lots on the market for people to bid on him and so they can be fixed and get on the tax roll as soon as possible.
I'll, I've been, I've worked on that in the past with Emergency Manager Gavin. Mayor wants me to work on this issue continuing, I'll, I'll be glad to get back on it. And I think we would be able to get something within the next four weeks, I would hope.
And I appreciate it if you make the contract as short as possible.
You know, it's, it's easier sometimes when I just use the contract we have.
I know.
Adapt it. So if it's, if you think that's long, I'd rather just try to keep the same thing if we can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor.
That's it for me.
Is, is any other public? Is this Councilman Moby Doon, is that correct? Whatever reason your light is not lighting on to let me know that you're speaking, was it, go ahead.
It's okay, maybe because I'm on my phone, but I want to start off by saying congratulations and good job today on your debut and hosting our, our city council meeting. I also want to concur with the rest of the council on, on the DPW and doing a great job with John Salome. I actually was able to do a ride along with the supervisor Rod and Wesley, a union employee, Wesley Zane, and the actual big plow truck. And let me tell you, when watching the residents' faces recording the plow truck getting through, coming by, one thing that they did struggle with was that, you know, a lot of some of the residents, even after the mayor went ahead and put out the, you know, the sirens, some residents kind of kept their vehicles out on the streets and, and so I asked, you know, these people, and they said, it really slows us down and these employees, these, these workers were working from three A M. till seven P M., so I want to congratulate them, the entire team at DPW. You know, and I, I tell you, I got several phone calls of people celebrating like it was a holiday. And they said, I feel so good that my street was plowed. So I'm glad that a lot of the residents were really ecstatic with that. I also want to thank Lynn and the, and the woman at the clerk's office, I think they do a phenomenal job. I always kind of go in there for no reason and just hang out with them and and just thank them constantly. You know, I know Lynn and, and the women over there do a great job. And then I just also wanted to, you know, just, you know, what's my opinion? I know they are very controversial about the merge. But in reality, I know very little regarding this. I know I did get brought up in two thousand and seventeen. I know that there are a lot of residents that had their concerns for it. So I just want to say that I thank the, you know, the council for allowing this to go to even a public hearing so that everybody can be engaged and so that we can get the, you know, the proper understandings from what the residents really want and, and what the professionals feel that needs to happen. And, and with that said, I'm going to yield the rest of my time. Thank you so much.
Councilman. Any other council members?
Council Protem. Tom Wensel.
Okay, Councilman Tom Wensel.
Yeah, I just wanted to say you did a great job tonight. Throwing under, under the bus like this, you did a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Hope it didn't hurt.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah.
Mayor, were you trying to say something? I thought I'd seen your light light up. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I don't know if Councilman Constance spoke, he has his hand up too, I don't know.
I missed it, we'll have him go next. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Council Chair Protem. I also want to commend you, you did an amazing job with this, with this meeting. Thank you, I appreciate your leadership. I also, I want to commend our, the excellent work our DPW did clearing the roads. And also the residents that did move their vehicles out of the street to allow the snow plown. And I want to remind our residents, you know, when we do declare a snow emergency, please remove your vehicles from the street to allow our DPW to, to go through the streets a lot faster. They worked really hard that day. They were up at, they were plowing at three A M. in the morning for sixteen hours. And the next, the next morning, they got up, same thing, just to clear what was left over. Again, they did an amazing job. My hats off to Director Salome for the great communication you, you know, you did, you kept me up to speed. I know we talked, you know, late in the evening, the night before, even that day off, just give me updates, I appreciate it, Mr. Salome. I also want to acknowledge, we had a couple, three, three new hires. I know somebody from the council logged on. We have a, a police officer, Mehdi Hadwan, joined the new, he is new to the department, the police department. We also, we, we hired two firefighters, Alec Bills and Alex, excuse me, Loria. I wa, I just want to welcome all three of them to the city of Dearborn Heights. And I know Councilman Wensel saw the thunder, but he always does an amazing job. He's always helping out with the food drive. So don't forget, you know, as Councilman Wensel mentioned, the food drive on on Saturday. I also want to thank Annapolis High School Key Club, Atso Ford High School and also Melvin Dale. What they actually did, they, they made up cards for the senior citizens. And we delivered a bunch of food boxes with, with Valentine's cards, you know, for, for our senior citizen. And we'll be handing those out also on, on Saturday with, with the food boxes. And Council Chair Protem, I want to also bring to your attention, I know with forensic audit, you know, I know I've gotten some, some, some phone calls from residents asking me the status of that. And also I've had the discussion with our city attorney Gary Miyaki, Mr. Miyaki regarding, you know, regarding this here. And I know from today moving forward, you know, I'm still, I want to be in full, full compliance, you know, with the council, obviously coming from the council and, you know, advocated for this. So it's up to the discretion of the, the new council to see if, you know, what part if we, I know Councilman Muscat, you know, discussed that with me as well, moving forward with the forensic audit. But I'd like to make a recommendation with Mr. Miyaki right now that we can actually go. We, we want to work with the council and I want to make sure that we're, we have everything we need for the council. So there's just to save money for this, for the attorney's fees that we can just go with Mr. Miyaki to go through. If we do go with the forensic audit with the Raymond Group, again, it's up to the council. But whatever you guys want, I'm here for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilman Robert Conston.
Well, I was gonna comment on the Councilman Abdallah's comment about people begging. And yeah, I think one of the immediate concerns is sometimes people right in the road, like at Ford and Telegraph, the people will sometimes enter the road. And, and I also heard from residents about what could be done. But just to piggyback on what the Mayor Bazey just mentioned about the forensic audit, I think that's a good idea. So originally, the council had a separate attorney that was hired just for that issue. And the former mayor, there was an action brought to compel him to sign the contract and so forth. But going forward, that may be able to be handled the best by, by the city attorney, one attorney for the mayor and for the council moving forward.
Thank you, Councilman. Just quickly in regards to the item on the waiving of the late fees on taxes, for whoever the council person is that's in favor of bringing that forward, obviously, create something, bring it forward at the next council meeting so we can vote on it, unless you want to make the motion right now.
I move, I will make the motion, Council Protem.
Go ahead, Councilman.
I will make a motion basically to refund the three percent fee which was paid by residents for taxes paid on February the sixteenth.
Support.
Motion made by Councilman Zohair Abdoh, supported by Councilman Ray Muscat. Is there any minimal discussion, please?
Council Protem. This is only for the people that painted on that day. And should we give them a grace period of how many days to do this?
Obviously, it's something that, that's why personally I felt something like this. If that's what you're gonna bring forward personally, I would do this at the next council, so we could have a discussion with.
Yeah, you know, so here, the Councilman Abdallah, can we discuss this and, and see if we come up with a resolution for it and for the next council meeting so we can iron everything out?
I withdraw my motion and we'll go for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Good idea.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council members? Hearing none. The next item on the agenda is announcements from.
Public officials.
Yeah, public officials, thank you. Any announcements? Madam? Yes, Chief Myers.
Yes, thank you, Council Chair Protem, Council. Tonight I have on the Zoom with me and if you could unmute them, Clerk Mona Abdallah Hajaji and Ahmed Balut from Access Community Services. They're here to join us in a really exciting announcement for our community. The Dearborn Heights Police Department, along with Access Community Services, have entered into a partnership that is gonna be explained more by Ms. Abdallah Hajaji. But it's to deal with substance use disorder and getting people that are in substance use crises or mental health crises connected with the people that they need to seek the help that is most definitely needed to get them the treatment that they need or the mental health care that they need. This is something that we've worked on with Access over the last few months. They were able to secure a grant. Officer Hamzi Yunus here at the police department has volunteered to be the coordinator here at our police department for this project. We're super excited. I don't think all of our residents see the day in and day out tragedies that my office here at the police department, our officers see every day, that opioid crisis has taken on our community, that mental health issues has taken out on our community, the families that deal with them. So we're really excited about working with Access. I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Abdallah Hajaji to talk, talk about the program. And I believe she's gonna have Ahmed, who's also on the line, discuss it a little bit. But we're super excited. We think this is a great program for our community to end some of these cycles of, of criminal actions that are dealing with substance use disorders or mental health and actually getting people the help they need to get out of that cycle. So I'll let, turn it over to you, Ms. Hajaji.
Chief Myers, did we get both of them? I know we got Mona.
Ahmed is on. Ahmed seems to be unmuted.
What's his last name?
Balut, he's unmuted now.
Okay, he's good, okay. I just wanted to make sure they were both unmuted, thank you.
Thank you, well, good evening. Good evening. I want to thank you guys for giving us a few moments of your time tonight to discuss this program. I am actually a resident of Dearborn Heights, so this is very near. I was actually enjoying listening to this session today. I work at Access, it's the nonprofit organization and you're located in Dearborn, Michigan, our headquarters. I'm their community engagement manager and I oversee their substance abuse prevention, community coalition. We have different items when it comes to substance use and mental health. We have a prevention aspect, we have a treatment and recovery aspect. This particular program is part of, to be honest, all three. This particular program is part of, to be honest, all three. We are working with our partners. We've had a longstanding relationship with Dearborn Heights Police and Fire Department and their support to our prevention efforts in the schools and in our community. This particular program in partnership with Dearborn Heights Police is to provide individuals who have had a run in with law enforcement, who are seeking help, who really don't know where to go when it comes to receiving help for mental health and substance use. Particularly with the opioid pandemic that has hit across the nation, our community has severely suffered from this. Our goal is to work with the police department to have individuals who are seeking help, who would like to receive help, to give them the option to care. There's nothing that's mandated to anyone, but we have been doing this work with Dearborn Police and have seen some success. And we have wanted to move it over to Dearborn Heights. And as Chief Myers has stated, we recently received a grant through the Community Foundation that is funded through the state of Michigan. And it was really wonderful that we were able to receive that because the cities of Dearborn and Dearborn Heights are actually not considered hotspots when it comes to drug trafficking, but we do see the repercussion of it in our community. And so it took us some time to explain to, you know, grants and to writing grants, you know, why this is so important to our community. As you guys know, our communities are predominantly Arab American and Arab Americans are considered white on the census, the United States census, and that makes it very difficult for us to express our work and the health disparities in our communities. These programs are, of course, for everyone and anyone that comes through. Now, we did want to work particularly with the police department because we know the pressures that happens on our law enforcement. I don't think I've, you know, what I would say, you know, I could say is that the police department doesn't want to continue to arrest individuals who are, you know, either have like a mental health case or substance use case. I think that they would prefer that they would receive some treatment. Now, this work is being done by our wonderful advocate Ahmed Balut. He is actually a former police officer from Arizona, and he is very passionate about this work. He speaks Arabic and English, which is very helpful. You know, again, from the access point, we have really driven our efforts for both the cities Dearborn and Dearborn Heights to receive as much as possible when it comes to prevention, treatment and recovery when it comes to substance use and mental health. I want to turn it over to Ahmed, who's been patiently waiting today. I do want to say I really, really, really appreciate the support all these years of Chief Dave Borgan from the Fire Department, former Chief Lee, and now Chief Myers. I have to say that if I've only known Chief Myers for a little bit of time, but he has been a wonderful person to be working with. I have always respected all of the law enforcement individuals that I have worked with. They have been nothing but helpful towards us. And it doesn't help that actually every single one of them has a wonderful sense of humor. You kind of need that in this line of work when you're stressed out and it's a very difficult job to take on. But if you know me or you don't know me, you will get to know me that I'm very dedicated to this job and to this community. And I can tell you that Ahmed has to be a more dedicated individual than I am. So I want to hand it off to Ahmed, just to give you a little bit of understanding what we do when our advocate goes out with a police officer.
Thank you, Mona. I'm happy to be here. I'm a former resident of Dearborn Heights not too long ago, but I still live close by. So this work is pretty much involves me working with police officers, Officer Yunus from Dearborn Heights. He's been more than amazing. We started working together since last week and we've already had some good results already. So I'm very happy about that. Tomorrow, going to be going out also, so we'll be seeing our faces in the neighborhoods, you know, helping out people that are struggling with addiction or mental health. They need the face-to-face contact, especially now with COVID, where most of these people that were suffering through addiction lost some of those, some of the face-to-face contact. They need that. So so some people are doing good. Some people might relapse. So we provide that face-to-face contact and give them, give them, them and their family with whatever resources they need. And this is a learning process. Of course, not everything's working. Dearborn might work in Dearborn Heights, but it's very neighbor, their neighbors together. So we serve this almost the same clients. So with that, I don't want to take too much time. So happy to be.
I did want to add that we do provide resources as in if it's an individual whose family is living with them. Ahmed is a Narcan trainer, so he will provide them with a Narcan kit and the training on the spot. Now, when it comes to COVID pandemic, because of the safety precautions, we are fully PPE equipped for our advocate. There is a lot of precautions that we take into place. As you know, they don't drive in the same car as a police officer. When they get to the home, they stand six feet away from, you know, the individual outside. So Ahmed is, you know, taking a taking a toll right now in this cold weather. But we knew that from when the pandemic hit in March, around May, we were, our clients were struggling that in the city of Dearborn. And so we had to find a way for Ahmed to go back out. They do follow up with individuals if they're in the hospital. And then he connects them to a peer coach, which is a person in recovery or a therapist, a substance user, mental health therapist. When he gets to that side HIPAA is involved, the treatment side. But Ahmed does do welfare checks and follow-up calls with our clients. And it doesn't just stop there. We take a holistic approach at our agency on an individual. So if somebody comes in for a substance use or mental health problem, but has housing or billing or, you know, public aid or doesn't have access to, you know, equitable health, we do try to find ways to provide them with other resources that the agency holds. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
David. Thank you, Ahmed, and
Councilman.
for putting this together. Councilman Zerhabul Hax.
I just want to know if they have a phone number or address where they can be reached.
Yes. So we just recently did a video with the the Dearborn Heights Police that will be coming out, I want to say next week. I don't want to say a hundred percent because I don't know where the media person is, but that should be coming out with our information. But I can provide my contact information, our our phone number for the hotline. You know, I can give that to you now, but I also provide it to you guys. It's three one three six one four zero five zero nine. That's the cell phone number that is with Ahmed all the time. You know, he does his best. We do say that, you know, we're hoping to get to people between twenty-four to seventy-two hours prior to receiving the file from the Dearborn Heights Police Department.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mona. Thank you.
Yes, please, Chief.
The video will be out on Facebook, on the cities, and the tomorrow on the police departments. They are not paid actors in there, I promise you. These are real people trying to do a video. Mona, Ahmed, and Hamzi and Captain Smith. So it's a great video. This is a great program. We hope to get it pushed out to everybody so they know there's resources out there for them to get this help. Thank you. I know it's late.
Thank you, Chief.
Provided there is no other additional comments from community members or
We have Treasure. Yep, we got her.
Go ahead. And our mayor.
Hi, thank you, Council Care Program, Abdal and honorable council members and and mayor and everyone that's joining us tonight. I just want to give you a real quick update from your treasurer's office. As you know, we have a program called Customer Care. And we do a follow-up calls to residents to see how they're doing, how they're service-wise with our treasurer's office. But the care part, I want to stress, we also believe in communication and being knowledgeable. And so right now, we're doing every two weeks is a treasurer's talk. It's a live stream that people can view and read. The last one, I want to show you the resources that we shared with the public. And and so far, we've had over five hundred views, and that was actually done last night. So it's always the Monday before the city council meeting, we do the treasurer's talk. And so we shared resources and we talk about if people need food or if they need help paying a water bill. They can ask us these questions. We actually have the resources. We can hand you the information right at our window. But last night, we talked about the importance of tax foreclosure and prevention, how to stay in your home. We don't want people losing their homes. And so I've been working with Wayne County Treasurer, Eric Sabri, does a wonderful job. He's introduced several new programs. I mean, we already knew about the pay-as-you-stay payment program and the reducing or there's actually based on your income, you know, your taxes and making payment plans. But also, he has a new hardship policy. And this includes, this is what I want to tell people, commercial properties. If you know you're a business owner and you're struggling, they have a hardship application available for you. Residential rental properties hardship application. So we keep in mind that our landlords have maybe haven't been collecting their rent, but also there's moratoriums. And so with that being said, if they're struggling, there's some support there from the Wayne County Treasurer's Office. And we all know there's increasing financial distress right now across all of our communities. So I want to give you the phone number to make you make an appointment online by going to Wayne County's website, or you can call them at three one three two two four five nine nine zero. If any resident has a question, please feel free to call me directly on my line, which is three one three seven nine one three four one seven, and I will help you navigate through this process, at least finding these resources, including like Wayne Metro and others and United Way and Salvation Army. I mean, there's a lot of great resources out there. So we don't want anybody to think that they have to struggle. And so I wanted to share that. The the other thing I want to remind people is that on Monday, which is March the first, this is the last day you can pay your 2020 taxes at your local treasurer's office. So and we will request that it be put on WDHC as well as we'll do social media, our website, treasurer's website, and posted at City Hall. Again, it's Monday, March first. You can come in and pay it, but March second, those tax rolls roll over to Wayne County, and then you'll have to pay with Wayne County. So we want people to be aware of that. And then the very last thing I have is to remind folks that we had to reschedule our Dearborn Heights mask distribution, the community distribution we were doing. So it is rescheduled for Saturday, the first Saturday in March, March the sixth at noon, high noon. We're going to meet at Salvation Army at two six seven zero zero West Warren Avenue. And we're going to go out and just drop, no contact, drop masks. They're bad. We already have them bagged in in groups and drop them on people's doors. I want to thank, first of all, Wayne County, Warren Evans, who helped get us the mask. We're looking at probably twenty thousand. Our mask will go out that day. I also want to thank our own Dearborn Heights Emergency Manager, Lee Gavin, who's also helping coordinate the masks. And I'm going to forget people, but we have a lot of student organizations, Crestford National Honor Society, GMCA Youth Leadership Program, Henry Ford College, and Leslie Windless, the union there that are coming out. So we're welcoming more volunteers, though. So we're hoping for a beautiful day and get out twenty thousand plus masks to our residents where they should be. And that's all I have. Well, if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to call me. Thank you.
Thank you, Treasurer Lisa Hixley. And we, at this particular point, if you don't mind, Lynn, bringing on our chief, the mayor's chief of staff, Mariana Herdendis. She had her hand up. Go ahead.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. So first of all, I wanted to introduce myself. I am the current chief of staff for Mayor Bozzi. And as the new FOIA coordinator, I will be heavily involved in the process for updating and repairing any flaws that the city's FOIA policies and procedures currently have. As of recently, the city has engaged in ongoing discussions with Charles Blackwell, who has expressed some concerns he has regarding the city's FOIA policies and procedures. And we want to assure everyone that we take all of these matters concerning the city's FOIA policies and procedures very seriously. And we at the city are taking active measures to ensure that our FOIA policies and procedures continue to remain compliant with all applicable FOIA laws. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mariana. Great meeting you again and continue good work. At this particular point, if there's no, was there any other ones? Oh, I'm sorry. Our favorite radio sounding personality, Michael McCaffrey, go ahead.
Hello, Council Chair and Mayor. Just want to touch on a couple of items. First off, Carolyn County Library and John F. Kennedy Junior Library are now doing computer by appointment. If you want to make an appointment, please call three one three seven nine one thirty-eight hundred for Carolyn County Library and three one three seven nine one six zero five zero for JFK Library. We also look to soon be opening the lobby area at Carolyn County Library for the new item area for grab and go service. So check the website for updates on that. Please remember, we are adhering to mask use and social distancing mandates, so adherence is appreciated and enforced. As a friendly reminder to visitors to our city buildings, please wear your mask correctly over your nose and your mouth for the safety of staff and residents as such. When you're wearing your mask. Second, the next round of craft kit boxes is available for signup. If you are interested in a craft kit box and want to sign up, look for information on our website at dhcl.mishlibrary.org. Finally, Wednesday, February twenty-fourth at seven PM, cord cutters will define streaming, talking about different options for free and paid streaming. Clearly show how it saves patrons money and explain how to get one hundred percent free digital TV. The talk is done by Chuck Eglington, a self-employed internet and computer programmer, and Chris Edwards, a career broadcast meteorologist. You can find the Zoom link on our website by either Googling Dearborn Heights Libraries or going to dhcl.mishlibrary.org. That's all for now. Thanks for your time and see you at the library soon.
Thank you, Michael. Much appreciated. Any other?
Council Chair Protem?
Yes.
I have one.
Go ahead.
I have one really quick. I'd like to thank Mayor Bozzi.
Of course.
I'd like to thank Mayor Bozzi for including our animal license information in his weekly broadcast and to remind those that do have animal licenses that they expire on Sunday, February twenty-eighth. We will be accepting them, you know, still making payments for them on March first for the regular price of either eight dollars or fifteen dollars or twenty-five if it's a pit bull. On March second, there will be a ten dollar late fee. So thank you, and we'll see you all before then. Thank you.
And at this particular point, now we have the public comments section. This is where the public is allowed to comment. Please raise your hand on the Zoom application. I'll write your name down and call on you in order that you raise your hand. You need to state your name, the street, and the city that you live in. You will have a three-minute time limit. At the end of the three minutes, I will either mute you or go on to the next person. Don't forget to unmute them. This is on hand. And I will have, if you don't mind, Madam Clerk, so we could give the residents that are speaking, that was a great idea, by the way, by you guys with the signs. Yep. So if you don't mind, I'd appreciate using that. So at this particular point, any public comments?
I have Dana Parrish.
Hey. Go ahead, Dana.
Good evening, Council Chair Protem, we're glad Council Chair tonight, Mayor Bozzi, congratulations, congratulations, Kim Constan, and Mr. Miyaki, congratulations as well. Want to say a few things. DPW did a fantastic job on snow removal. In my years that I've been in the city, I don't think I've ever seen snow removal happen in the morning as quickly as it was. In fact, a couple, one of the mornings, it was even before I I got up. It's incredible. The comments on social media have been incredible. Everybody's been making very, very positive comments on it. A couple of things I wanted to say besides saying thank you very much to the union employees who really busted their humps on that. The other is I know that the mayor's been working very hard on a lot of things. One of the things I think that we talked about a while back was fleet management. And I know that's probably one of the things on this plate that he's probably going to be working on. Another thing is the the website, because our city website is one of the things where we put out a lot of information. But right now, since the previous way it was set up, the only thing that was out there was the dates of our city council meetings. I think we can get a lot of good information out there about a lot of things that are going on, including some of the things we're trying to put out now. I think we can get a lot of good information out there about a lot of things that are going on, including some of the things we're trying to put out now, but it's just not available out there. I know it's one step at a time right now. The, one of the other things I wanted to, to hit on was the, the tax bill situation. I, I think that was a very good idea. One of the other things that was, that was mentioned on the tax bill was it's, you know, it's, it's not the law and you have to abide by it. But the tax bill did have an error on it. We want to stick by the law, but the tax bill did say it was due February 15th, 2020. So the tax bill did have an error on it. So I think it's a good idea that I do stand behind Mr., excuse me, Councilman Abdalhak. Doing that one day, because I think that kind of makes up for the situation that, that we had. So I thank you very much. And I think the council and the mayor and administration are doing a great job working together. Thank you very much and everyone have a safe night and stay healthy. Thank you very much.
Dana, thank you very much. And, and, and just I'd like to add to that, I've always appreciated people like you, people like Zohair and, and Grandma Suzie, et cetera, et cetera. I, I, I love it when residents participate, show up to the meetings, ask, ask questions, hold us accountable for listen, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I can tell you, I speak for myself. I'm sure I speak for all the other council members and mayors administration. I thank you for participating. Thank you.
Next I have Be Honest and Fair is the screen name.
Okay.
Yes, this is Felicia Roberts, two five five one seven Dartmouth. I have noticed many changes in employee roles and new employees are being hired in and those things are announced at the meetings. But nobody is recognizing any employees as they used to. People that have been with the city for any amount of time, they used to recognize and, and give awards and stuff in person. Why are they not being recognized or announced even at these meetings, even though they're not in person? Do they not mean anything to the city anymore? Or is it just, it's just a question?
Mr. Mayor, are you also Be Honest and Fair? Okay, Mr. Mayor, you want to go ahead and answer that?
Yeah, thank, excuse me. Thank you for that comment. We're actually, that's one of the things that I've been, I've had, you know, my department had meetings the second day I was on the job. And one of the things I talked about is employee recognition. And wanted to make sure that our employees, you know, have a good work environment, but also have to be recognized, you know, when they do a good job. And, you know, we talked today at, I was at the police station and I know they have training over there. They're doing a great job with training all the police officers with various training programs. But also Elizabeth and I, we sat, we're actually trying to come up with something, an employee recognition program, like a certificate or some type that we can actually present that, try to bring a box, excuse me, a positive spin at the council meetings, you know, I know a lot, there's a lot of concerns, issues that brought up at the council meetings, but also what I want to do is I want to start recognizing city employees for the great job that they're doing. And this is something I'm, I'm, I mean, this, I take that to heart. I want to make sure that employees, when they do a good job, they are recognized. So I'm working on the procedure with, with Elizabeth from HR, the, the HR director. So please stay tuned. I'll make that, we'll make that announcement soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey.
Next up is that.
Ready, Vince D.
Good evening, everybody. Vince Strapkowski, Columbia Street, Wayne County, Michigan, Dearborn Heights. Do you want me to say that again? Because I missed it the first time.
That's okay. We'll get you. We'll get you.
Mr. Abdalhak, you ever heard the term of the dog and pony show?
Are you addressing me? I'm sorry.
Have you ever heard of the term the dog and pony show?
Yes.
Salesman's term. They did that to you at the Dearborn Dispatch Center. Ask our chief of police how many phone calls from the south end of the city go to Taylor because somebody's using their cell phone. Right here, I have a line in my house to guarantee that I will get to the proper police department. Anybody using a cell phone goes to the closest tower, right? That tower will automatically put them to the closest city. Okay. Having a consolidated dispatch works fine for people up here and people up here. Down here, no. Okay, that's one thing I want to get out. The other thing is DPW did, did a great job. This is the first time my entire subdivision was plowed in the same day. So hats off to them. I don't mean that right on this, but this Dearborn Heights consolidated program, I'll tell you what. Like the past mayor said, we own it. We don't want to be customers. And why, if you took $200,000 out of your budget for three years, $600,000, what did you do with it? That money could have gone towards new equipment. And also if you don't maintain your car, it's going to look like crap too. Okay. So yeah, they've got all the bells and whistles, all brand new stuff. We had all brand new stuff at one time too. Let's see what their stuff looks like in 20 years or 17 years. Okay. Really consider if you want to be a customer or not. Like the mayor said, when you bought into the water program down river, you don't want to be a customer. Thanks for your time. I appreciate you all. I know you guys have got a tough job to do. Man, thank you.
Thank you Vince.
Hey, we have Deborah Colby.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am Deborah Colby at three nine six six Cornell. The reason why I joined on the Zoom was thank you very much Nancy Brier. Kudos to you for getting me on this. One of the things I'm taking from this, I've been a resident over 15 years. I'm very excited to hear that we are the 10th safest city in Michigan. There's got to be a reason for that. My other concern is the 911 issue that should be left to the residents to decide on that factor because it affects us very strongly. We have to know the ins and outs. We have to know the good and the bad. We have to know all of the information in order to make that educated decision. I do love everything that you guys are doing. We must be doing something right. I am taking away from this and I'm going to be bragging, we're the 10th safest city in Michigan. That is important. And why? Let's evaluate that. If the 911 issue, that to me is a strong component. If you're the safest city, people are going to want to live here. That's a good thing too. If you took that away, how's that going to affect our city and the residents? I'm with Vince on this. I'm in the south end. I have, I don't have a landline. I just have a cell phone. I am by myself. I am over age and whatever. I'm high risk. So this is a concern and I'm, know I'm not the only citizen that's going to voice that opinion. So that is something I'm with you guys about. Get it all squared away. What's the pros and the cons, the cost? We do have to keep updating our, our system. Then that's common sense. So thank you very much. I wanted to voice that and yay, let's, let's stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you Deborah. Thank you for participating.
And the last person I, I see that has their hand raised is Leslie Windless. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Leslie Windless. I'm on Annapolis Street in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, four eight one two five. So I wanted to thank Chief Myers for the clarification. I do think the context of his email was important to this item being added to the agenda because it does sound like he was pushing more for it to start the conversation versus for it to be a vote tonight. With that being said, I also wanted to address some of the comments. I think that was made by Mr. Miyaki about the Dearborn city not wanting to wait. I wanted to let you guys know that I attended the study session as well as their meeting tonight. And they haven't approved it on their end because they still have outstanding questions. So it's not like they've already approved it and they're waiting on us. They're still waiting for their outstanding questions to be answered and they have not, their city council has not approved this yet either. So I was wondering if it was possible to have a joint session between Dearborn and Dearborn Heights to get, because they have really great questions and you guys have really great questions. So I'm wondering if it's worth doing them both at the same time. So we can all be on the same page. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up is something I've brought up multiple times, but there is a spotlight feature on the Zoom app where you guys do not have to bounce all around the screen and continuously lose people. It's very easy. I would be willing to show whoever runs the Zoom meetings in the background, how to do that. I think it would be beneficial for these particular meetings when there are certain people who have to stay at the front of the conversation for the duration of the meeting. And then I just want to end with kudos, one to the whole city. I had started a list, but at this point it's a book and there is too many people to thank for the whole city, just the school district, everybody at City Hall, everybody on Facebook, all, everybody on the city Facebook, on the Culture Commission Facebook. There's been so much support for Black History Month that is overwhelming. Like I, the list is like three pages. I can't even read everybody's name. Marianna just got here and she hit the ground running and started jumping in to do stuff as well. So it's just so many people. Also wanted to shout out DPW, Treasurer Lisa Hicks Clayton, Mayor Bazi for the mass distribution and then Mayor Bazi for the few distributions. I hope everybody has an awesome, awesome, awesome night and I'm tired now.
Thank you Leslie.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Good night.
Madam Clerk, any other public comments?
I don't see any hands up. How about you, Georgie Anne? Do you see any? I don't see any hands. Nope.
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn by Councilman Ray Mucke at 11:00 PM. Second is by
Nobody said.
Robert Conston.
Robert Cast.
By Robert Conston. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
All in favor? All in favor?
Favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Better not be.
I have it. Good night, ladies and gentlemen. Callie Nikta.